Hey, guys. Can you be okay? Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'll stay muted unless I need to say something.
Good evening. I did like to call the March 25, 2025 Mathacton School Board of Directors meeting to order.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love Arcola. It's one of the best places I've been. The teachers here are all so friendly. They always help me when I need it without hesitation. I used to think that learning couldn't be fun at all, but my teachers really make learning enjoyable. As we move from seventh to eighth grade, our teachers give us more independence and responsibility, preparing us for high school. Our Cola has great sports programs with amazing coaching. Being a part of the football, wrestling, and track teams make it feel like my teammates and coaches are another family. What I love most about our Cola is the strong friendships I've built with people that I didn't even know a couple of years ago. While getting up for school can be tough, getting to see my friends and favorite teachers makes up for all the lost sleep. Thank you for your time.
The public is hereby advised of audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, all board members are present with the exception of Ms. Cancor, who is excused, and Mr. Mersky, who is participating virtually. Next on the agenda, we have guests and scheduled speakers for Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I ask that you join me out front with our two junior board representatives, and we issue them their certificates. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our Cola principal, Mr. John Eworth. Mr. Eworth is going to lead us in the recognition of some pretty incredible individuals. And tonight, we're so proud for him to share us, share with us, the Spirit of Mathacton Awards. Mr. Eworth?
Good evening, and thank you, board members, for the opportunity to recognize some of the great staff and students that we have at our Cola. As you know, the Spirit of Mathacton Award is an opportunity to recognize our students, staff, and volunteers. Spirit of Mathacton Award recipients are individuals who consistently model the qualities of the nine core values of the Mathacton School District. These individuals enrich our school community with their knowledge, commitment, and support. First, we would like to recognize Mrs. Stephanie Bierdely from our professional staff. Stephanie Bierdely serves the Arcola Student Body as a school counselor. Her work to support students begins first thing each day and lasts well past the typical end of the day. Whether it be helping students get organized in the morning or providing supervision and support for students who stay after school to get caught up on some work, Steph is always checking in on her students and is willing to help them succeed. Steph does a great job communicating with families and is very resourceful in providing recommendations so our students can reach their potential. Steph always extends a listening ear for students who need to share concern and works diligently to support our seventh-grade students as they transition to our Cola. Steph treats every student the way we would want our own children to be treated, with care, genuine concern, and kindness. We appreciate Steph and her daily efforts to make our Cola a place where each student feels welcome and cared for. Congratulations, Steph. Next, we'll recognize one of our support staff members, Miss Vanessa Polinsky. Vanessa Polinsky is a valued member of the Arcola family, serving as our Cola's attendance secretary. Vanessa works hard to ensure that student attendance information is accurately submitted and recorded each day. Attention to detail and collaboration are two of her standout strengths. Vanessa's smiling face and pleasant personality are always on display to greet students and staff members in need of assistance at the attendance window. In addition, Mrs. Polinsky is occasionally stationed at the main office front desk, where she enthusiastically greets visitors, directs phone calls, and otherwise assists the office staff in a variety of ways. Vanessa's many positive contributions to the Arcola community are recognized and appreciated. Next, we'll be recognizing one of our volunteers, Ms. Larsina Johnson, who's unable to be here in person tonight, but I believe is watching the recording. So we're excited to share about her. Larsina Johnson serves as the president of the Arcola Home and School and epitomizes what it means to reflect the spirit of Mathacton. Larsina spends countless hours planning activities for students and supporting teachers and programs. She is so full of energy and brings her all to everything in which she is involved. She truly wants what is best for the students at our Cola, and her leadership demonstrates that that time and time again. Larsina brings out the best in each member of the team she leads. As a Mathacton graduate, she understands the importance of giving back and honoring the traditions of this great district. We are so blessed to have her support. Her contributions to our Cola are greatly appreciated. And lastly, we're pleased to recognize one of our students, eighth grader Ethan Carver. Ethan Carver is an eighth-grade student at our Cola and a young man who has a bright future ahead of him. Two of Ethan's greatest attributes are what we wish for all of our students, simply to be respectful and kind. Ethan not only demonstrates these qualities to the staff at our Cola, but also to his peers. Ethan participates in extracurricular activities and can often be seen after school working to improve himself as a student athlete, once he's all healthy. Ethan always displays a positive attitude, which is contagious. For all of these reasons, Ethan is truly a leader at our Cola, and the impression and difference he makes really stands out. Keep up the great work, Ethan. Congratulations.
For members of the audience that were here specifically for the Spirit of Mathacton Awards and would like to exit now would be the best time to do that. You're certainly welcome to stay before we get on with our next presentations. Next on the agenda for guests and scheduled speakers, we have members from CHA and the Schrader Group to give us an update on the recommendation as listed on the agenda here this evening, and that is the recommendation on item 13H, which is listed as Professional Services High School Project. It states, "Approve CHA and Schrader Group to provide feasibility and planning services to address high school, building, and campus challenges issues as outlined in the provided summary scope at a cost not to exceed $161,708." The presentation is printed out for the members of the board and will be posted online and is posted on the screen here this evening. Devin?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Board members, so I have Arif Fazil here with us from CHA. We're just going to give you a quick overview of the next steps. Obviously, we are, we were hired to investigate the new high school project, and now we are resetting and going towards a renovation project at this point. So I just want to call to everybody's attention, there were, there was a facilities assessment completed back in 2023 by Bureau Veritas. Some of the information that was included in that report is shown on the screen and in the report in front of you. These are the items that were recommended to be completed from 2023 through 2028. So things like HVAC improvements, envelope upgrades, the roof replacement, addressing some of the stormwater issues that were causing infiltration into the building, rehabbing the pool. All of these items were identified as needs for the high school back in 2023 and were part of kind of like a baseline scope towards a future project. So if we go to the next slide, please, unless I have that, there we go. This will kind of reset us and push us towards what we're calling renovations and additions feasibility study. And what does that mean? That means we're going to do the following items. First, we're going to go through the building and take measurements, verify all the existing conditions, basically reset and assess the existing high school, what you have there, what can be done to it. It's going to take a lot of time modeling the existing building. So you'll see, I think there's a slide or there's some dates missing on the right-hand side of this. That would be through, there you go. That would be the first month of this process. So we'll be in there hopefully during spring break while no students are there, measuring things and building that model. Then we're going to go back with the district's administration and confirm all of the educational spaces. And that means taking an inventory of what's in the existing school and determining that the spaces are the right size or the wrong size. Maybe some spaces are too large or too small. Maybe there's program spaces that are missing from the high school that's not currently allowing you to perform some of the educational programming that you have planned. Once we are able to finalize the program, then we'll be able to move into concepts. So both of those things would be happening simultaneously throughout the month of April or the first month that we get started. Then we will establish what's called the base system scope. And that's really to get the building to be warm, dry, and safe. So all of the upgrades that were probably identified in that Bureau Veritas report, those would likely be included in part of the base system scope. It would be HVAC upgrades, electrical upgrades, just to get the building to a point where you're going to have a functioning high school for the next 20 to 25 years. The next phase would be what we're calling phasing and implementation parameters. So the team will go back, talk to the administration, and really figure out how many classrooms we can move in order to get the project to be renovated throughout the phase schedule. So maybe the district is willing to give up six classrooms and build some modular classrooms somewhere. That will kind of determine some of the phasing and determine the length of the schedule the renovation project would occur. After all of those, both of those would be in May. After all of those are completed, we would be able to get into concept designs and using all of the existing information from the existing school, a lot of the educational program that we've decided on, we'll be able to develop concepts. The first concept is really going to get the base system scope. So you'll see exactly what the minimum amount is to get the building up to speed. And then can we add on pieces? So can we add on a new pool instead of a renovation? Can we add on a couple of classrooms to replace some of the classrooms that are not PD appropriate sized? So things like that, we can kind of develop concepts off of those different parameters that we're creating based on what was decided in the programming efforts. Each of those concepts would then be assigned a cost estimate. So you can have, at the end of this process here, you'll have options that show the floor plans, the potential site plans, and then a cost associated with any of those options that are developed. At that point, we're into June and July, and we're looking for feedback and prioritization to really determine which direction we want to go. So we'll be able to have some discussions throughout the months of July and August based on costs. We'll probably go back and forth a little bit on, do we want certain things in the building or are certain things really not necessary at this point based on our current budgets? Then we'll be able to give final direction during a presentation probably in September. And just a note at the bottom there, the school district will be working with PFM, their financial advisor, to work on projections throughout this entire process to make sure that those cost estimates would be able to be, I guess, accounted for in the budget. I think we have one more slide, and then we'll get to questions. So we've provided proposals for both Schrader Groups and CHA's scope. That includes all of the items that we just discussed here, and these are our fees. There may be additional costs required based on certain surveying of items. Maybe we need to get some pipes cambered to figure out if we're going to be able to renovate certain areas or we need to get the building a little bit better scanned throughout the process. So there may be additional costs that would be requested of the district or the board throughout the process, but this is our, our not-to-exceed budget that takes you through that September process. And Arif is going to give a quick baseline of what those deliverables might look like for this process.
Thank you, Devin. So first of all, the good news is we've been involved in a lot of renovation projects, and there can be some really good positives that come out of that. So that's, that's number one. Recently, we just got bids three months ago for a project, Pleasant Valley High School. Had some very similar challenges, similar things to address, and we were able to bring that project well under budget, and they've got a lot of programmatic and great improvements that they're making. So from a renovation standpoint, our team together individually has a lot of experience with renovation projects. So that's the good news. The second piece of good news is we set the stage for some additional supporting funding from RCAP, and renovation projects are also eligible for that as well. So we will not lose that opportunity either. The other thing I can tell you is the renovation projects, one of the best advantages you have with a renovation project is to really capitalize and find good ways to reuse existing infrastructure. That is going to be the challenge of this entire study. So when Devin was talking about going back in and evaluating what is there and what we need to do to reset the building and make it functional for the next 20 years and integrate your priorities, that is challenge number one, and it is a challenge which, if you do it right, you can capitalize on. I'll give you one quick example. You look at the electric service for the building. It's probably more than likely that the main electrical service, the switchgear, the emergency generators would need to be replaced to serve for the next 20 years. But the question is, do the panels from the service to the individual distribution panels in the building, does the wiring from there to those panels need to be replaced or not? The next question is, do the electrical wires from the panels to the individual rooms that they serve and the outlets, et cetera, do they need to be replaced? If we can capitalize on not having to do that after evaluation, that is certainly why you do a renovation. The benefits of doing a renovation are to reuse structure and infrastructure that you have, but make sure you fix what's necessary to give you more life out of the building. That's really the purpose of a renovation. So if we do that well, that's a really hard exercise, and it does require some decision-making. It also requires perhaps some compromises, because new is new. But if you try to make renovation new, then you may as well build new. So that's one of the challenges we're going to have to have decision-making on when it comes to the infrastructure to get the warm, safe, and dry. Those are the type of things we're going to be working on. I think it can be done. A simple example is this room that you're sitting in. This room probably needs very minimal work, and we need to make sure that's how the documents end up, because then we're going to save money and be able to execute the renovation project. And then the second part of the deliverable will be, so that's how we would establish that base scope of work. Okay? The next part is what Devin's really good at is creatively looking at, how do we capitalize again on opportunities with the existing building? And where do we need to focus that investment to maybe repurpose or reconfigure spaces or build new? And that's where we're going to have to work with the administration and you to identify those, certainly put budgets to them, and then very importantly, narrow it down to what you can afford. So the challenge is there. I think the opportunities are there. We've done it before, and that's really the exercise we're going to be working through here with you to deliver, if that helps. Summarize it. Okay?
Thank you, Devin. Thank you. Arif, questions from members of the board to my right. Ms. Clary?
Yeah, I want to back up to something Devin said, and it was, it, I don't know if you can answer it, Devin, or not. And it's a question that I've been thinking about since the work session. So you said, we, I think the words used were resetting to renovation. So I just, I just want to focus on that for a moment, this resetting. So I guess my question is simply, if we don't know what our current financial projections are of, within the realm of what we could afford, if we don't know what that number looks like, how can we say that we are ready or that we can just pivot now to renovation without considering what that number is against what you could do with that number for a new building? Does something, does my question make sense?
It does, and I think the, the next step is to really figure out what needs to be done, because something needs to be done here, right? because something needs to be done here, right?
Absolutely.
So there is a minimum that we will assign a budget to, and then what are the pieces that we can add above and beyond that minimum? So what are the options that we can, and without knowing the budget, we're going to start creating these options, there'll be budgets attached to those options, not knowing that they'll be able to be afforded, but you'll at least have the estimates to provide information on this.
Yeah, you're still in renovation, and I think I'm back at new for a moment. I just want to stick at new for the moment. I'm not poo-pooing spending this money to, because I do think we need to investigate renovation, but I just want to focus on new for a second. We had a budget, or sorry, we had a projected cost of $213 million, which we, as a district, realized that we can't afford $213 million based on just what we can do here. So if, I'm making up numbers, I mean, I have no information, anybody. If our number from PFM is $150 million, I'm just going to use that number, how do we, we're jumping to resetting to renovation when I don't know what you could do with $150 million for a new school? I think I'm trying to get at, is it, is it $213 million or nothing? And that's why we're pivoting, because I don't know what the number is, and that's why I keep harping on, I want to understand the financial projections.
Yeah, so a lot of the projections for the new construction are based on square footages. So unless you're willing to really pull program out of the high school program, you're probably not going to build anything for 150. That's going to be, you know, a much smaller building. So what are we willing to take out of that? That's kind of a question for the administration and for all of you. You know, we could do that exercise again.
When we do get our number, maybe that's a conversation that we have at that point.
Sure.
Okay, all right. I don't know when the number's coming, but that's why I'm hyper-focused on the number, right? All right, I'll move on. The other question I have is the $162,000 rounding up for this feasibility study?
Yes.
Is, okay, let me back up. So months ago, we approved several million dollars for design fees to get us through various phases of the design. Is this 100, and I understand that whatever's not spent of that money now goes away?
Correct. So.
And then, so this spend is a new spend?
Yeah, so we went through schematic design. So there was a number, I don't know what the number was, but there was a number associated with schematic design.
Yep.
We also showed a number for design development that goes away, because we paused. So this would be a different number. Those numbers that were past schematic design are all gone at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the board understood that this wasn't already in what we already approved, and it's sort of separate, because that was a question I had from the slides. And then my final question is, you talked about a grant. Could you, you used acronyms, I had no idea.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, could you just talk about it a little bit more?
Yeah, I used acronyms, because that's what we do in public education.
I know, but I hate acronyms.
I tried. I'm just joking. So RCAP is the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, and Dr. Zerbi and I coordinated an effort with the state reps and state senators to reinforce our need to pursue some of that. And all I was saying is, the renovation pivot does not.
Proclude us.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I was saying.
Thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thank you for the few quick clarifying questions. You did say the timing of the bidding. I guess my question would be, if we make a final direction presentation in September where we have, you know, in theory, what we're going to do from a renovation addition perspective, does that still give us enough time for June of 2026 to start work? What is sort of the backend date of decision point from the board?
So I gave you the big advantages of renovation in terms of capturing opportunities with the existing infrastructure. One of the items there listed was phasing and implementation. So part of this study is going to look at what the timing of the project is with that timeline there. So I think it would be premature for me to answer that right now. I think we just would wait a little, but you are absolutely correct. Timing is everything, the timing of when we bid the project. I know if you caught what Devin was saying. So one of the things that's going to be key with this project is not only capitalizing on these opportunities of reusing infrastructure and components of the building, but the other thing that I like to point out is, we want to spend as little as possible on temporary and as much as possible on permanent. The example I always give is when you drive up and down the turnpike, it says it's a $200 million project, but I had, I checked with the actual contractor one time, because I was just curious, and only $50 million of it is actually going into the permanent improvements. Over $150 million of that is for all of the lane interchanges that they continuously do all the time and the effort they have to put in for the temporary. Of course, that's not anywhere close to what we're going to have to do. We've been successful. But the key will be to make sure that we're continuously working in the high school with some heavy efforts in the summer, like you were pointing out, but continuously being able to work, because that'll give the contractors and us, they'll give them an opportunity to bid more competitively.
Okay. Thank you, Fair. I guess as a follow-up to that, is there a premium, like in Eagleville, we did similar for HVAC, the lighting, I forgot what else we did, containment, casework, and some changes there. But I believe a lot of the work was done after the kids left for the day. Is there a significant premium for requesting that?
To do the work in the evenings, you're saying?
From like 3 to, I'm sorry, 3 to 11 or something like that?
There are opportunities for doing that. It's challenging, because for short periods and spurts, people are willing to do that. It's hard to get it to be continuous over two years, yeah, or, you know, this is not going to be nine months, it'll be longer.
No, actually, from a school year perspective. Is there significant dollar savings if we don't change, obviously, the footprint and putting the school, more or less, a new school on the parking lot and all the drainage, all the water issues and the footprint? There seems like there were a lot of dollars associated with that. If we're not changing the footprint, is that where a big portion of the gap between the 213 and whatever the number ends up becoming? Or is there still a significant cost associated with drainage?
So we're going to have to look at the additions specifically, and those are going to factor into, but we're talking about much smaller. Before, when we were building whole new plate, we were under full land development. So you're absolutely correct. Our land development costs and site costs are going to go down significantly. But on the other hand, we also might not be able to address some of the priorities as well.
Understood, for sure.
So it's kind of handed.
And two last quick questions. I believe we did do some asbestos pre-work in this building, is that correct?
I don't know the specifics of that, but we are going to have to get a full study and verify.
That was completed.
Okay. So you talk about additional scanning and looking through the walls, and your example was really clear for us, but I guess my question is, when is the best time for you to come back and say there's additional tests or x-rays or whatever needs to be done to really get the health of the building?
So if you looked at our timeline, I think what I'd like to do is propose some of that investigation happened this coming summer. So somewhere in that timeline there, we're probably going to come back to and suggest, I think if this is heading in the right, we didn't want to spend more money if we're not heading in that direction with the board consensus and the budget, as you've well outlined, matches and all of those things. So we're trying to be a little bit methodical about it, but probably in that June-July timeline would be the best time to do the building scan, if we're going to do that. We're probably going to do some geotechnical, and then strategically, we might be scanning some pipes to see, again, if we can save, we don't have to cut the pipes in that are under the slab, we're saving money and, you know, reusing things that are in decent shape. That's going to be the goal. So probably, I'm hoping in that summertime, Director.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Does Mr. Mersky have a?
I mean, I just had a comment to Ms. Clary's question. So if we, with the $213 million new high school construction, roughly 60% of the cost in that latest cost estimate was to the building itself. Okay? And that's like $127 million, give or take. All right, so if you, under her scenario of $150 million borrowing capacity, that means you'd have to lose $63 million in essentially building costs. That's 50% on a square foot base. So you'd only be able to afford the building half as big. That's why it's not feasible, right? You can't, you don't have enough left because of the site construction costs to modify the site, and because only 60% of the cost is associated with the building. Really, all you can do is cut down the size of the building, right, as a square footage basis. All the cost calculations for construction at this point are just square footage calculations. We haven't gotten to the stage of actually getting cost estimates on, you know, like concrete and block and facade infrastructure, right? It's strictly a square foot calculation.
Is he finished? Okay, Ms. Clary?
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. I appreciate everything that you've said, and I don't know that I disagree with you. I would just ask that when we do get the numbers, that we at least talk about it. That's all I'm asking. I don't want to shut the door on things prematurely. I just want to make sure that we vetted it all out. I mean, this is a big deal. So that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Grab?
Yeah, I also, and I don't know if you remember, but I seem to recall Mr. Gray's telling us there's a range of costs on a dollar per square foot basis. So I think if I remember correctly, his range was, it could be anywhere from $375 a square foot to $450 a square foot, and I think your estimate may have come in around $425. So that tells me that we could go with less expensive fixtures, finishes, facade materials, et cetera, and potentially get our cost per square foot down. And if you reduce the square footage, say by 20%, and reduce 20% off the per square foot price, you could change your number pretty significantly. So I just want to make sure you're well aware that when this discussion comes up, probably in May or June, we're going to be asking that question. And I'd really like to make sure that you're prepared to answer it for us, because I think when we start to compare two options of this renovation project versus a new school, there were discussions and decisions that were made on the new school that were not the cost-effective option. They were the, let's do it all option. And so I think at this point, we do, I want to see a, what is the price for a non-do-it-all option compared to a renovation? Because if those two numbers are closer together, it may be a different situation for the board. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I know for me, the decision to pivot is hard. It is a really hard decision for me to be comfortable with, and I am struggling. So I understand the financials are not where we thought they were, but I am definitely waiting to hear from PFM next month. And, you know, that number could, again, give the board a little bit of freedom or flexibility in this decision, or it could lock down the decision much quicker. We don't know yet. So I also just want to go back to something that was said, and I think that Mr. Winters asked the question, and maybe I need to be a little bit more direct than he may have asked the question. When we were talking about this last week, the question was asked that, is this schedule going to allow us to go out for bid in the winter so we can be ready to do the work in the summer of '26? So I'd just like an answer to that question.
So summer of '26, there's no way if we approve this in September that we're going to have bid documents ready in December. Everyone is clear on that, right?
Well, no, we're not. That's why I'm asking the question.
So there's no way to do that. You could, sorry, you could do some very small projects that you know are going to have to get done, pre-purchase some, you know, HVAC equipment or things like that that you know are going to be done in the project that could be done over that summer, but it's going to be very small and very strategic.
And it would be potentially prep for, how do you manage doing some work, say, in the winter of '26 into '27, and then spring, summer '27 to actually really start?
That is much more likely, yes.
So we're essentially in a situation where there's a year delay.
Correct.
Just so the board is clear, like, and that delay costs us how much money? 3%? Just asking, because this was the question about the pressure to move forward with the new construction, was time is money. It's 3% a year, right?
I think you had 3% to 5% in there.
So we just tack 3% onto our renovation costs. Okay. Just to clarify, my other question was, I think you had mentioned that in the timeline, there's a comment in here about confirmation of educational spaces. Can you talk a little bit more about what that actually looks like or sort of how that actually, what that actually means for us?
Sure. So first step is to figure out exactly what you have in the school. What are the spaces? What are the square footages? Are they underutilized? Are they overutilized? Are they underprogrammed, overprogrammed? How do we, what's the right-sized space that needs to be for that program to function? So we go through that, and then we sit down with everybody. We've already gone through this new high school programming. So there are certain spaces that we've added, such as the fab lab that you don't have in the school. So is that a new program that needs to be included in this renovation project? Is it a high priority? Is it a low priority? And we'll go through all of those types of spaces. There's probably a dozen of those.
So things like, do we want to move the district admin into the high school or not would be discussed at that time?
Correct.
Decisions about whether we want to move our, you know, special education programming into the building or not at that time.
Sure.
Whether we want to meet the PD minimums for space in our classrooms or not.
Correct.
So let me just make sure I understand correctly. Those decisions will come back to the board to be decided upon for the next step in the process. Is that correct?
I will leave that to the administration to decide that.
So let me be clear. I would like to ask that those decisions come back to the board to be decided upon because it will drive the price. If we add 10,000 square foot for district administration to be in the building, that drives the renovation dollar price up. If we decide to include special programming, like a fab lab, that drives our price up. It adds to our square footage that either has to be added on to or renovated in the existing building, because there isn't space for it now. So I do think that those are decisions that the board should be deciding. And I guess my other question was, on the land development costs, do we, in a renovation, assuming there's some new construction, do we have to address stormwater management?
Anytime there's an addition, you're going to have stormwater management to deal with.
So looking at some of the discussions we had in the property committee about stormwater management and about location of fields and adding stormwater management, is there a risk in a renovation that we would have to address stormwater management above ground that would potentially impact our fields existing on the property currently?
Not that would impact your current fields. You're not required to dig underneath of them and put retention basins there. There are other ways to do it, and it really depends on how much you want to improve on the site. So do you really want to improve the circulation and the traffic and the parking situation? That's going to impact, maybe you put a stormwater basin under some of those spaces, but you don't necessarily need to dig underneath of the fields so those can remain intact. Now, some of the practice fields, those might be up for grabs.
Okay, so maybe practice fields and maybe parking, when we redo parking or reconfigure parking or driveways or access points, you could potentially use that space underground.
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear. And I just wanted to, the other thing I just wanted to make sure I understand, when you come back to us in September, that presentation is going to look a lot like the presentation we just had with the concepts for the new high school, right?
So that will look, if you remember, we just presented schematic design. It won't look like that. It will look like the original concept. It will look like the original concept design that we did six months ago or whatever that was.
Okay.
But it will be similar to that.
And you will give us an indication of what things are included in that scope and price for that?
Correct. And we'll update you along the entire way of this process as well.
Okay. And then you mentioned options, that there were, there potentially would be options developed that would come back to the board, you know, in between, like, it sounded like May-June. How many options are we talking about?
So we still have to determine that. We had three major options in our proposal, but we're going to discuss with the district or with the administration as many options as we need to, to figure out what the best priorities are. So I'm not sure exactly how many we'll come to the board with, but we will be discussing all options behind the scenes.
Okay. And then my last question was, there was a comment that there's a potential for additional money that would be for expanded work in the June-July timeframe related to the building scan, geotech work, and the piping scan. Is that done through CHA?
No, the building scan, we would get a proposal from a separate company that specializes in the building scan. Likewise, if we do geotechnical.
The district would be paying CHA to do that subcontracting work?
No, you could pay them directly. We would just, like, the civil, for example, the geotechnical would go through the civil engineer that Schrader has, the building scan. We have a couple of companies that we reach out to. You would just pay it directly.
So I think we talked about this last week. And I think we talked about the fact that if it's not necessary, that we would prefer not to do that work until we decide that we have concepts we think we can move forward with. So I'm, I'm a little surprised to hear you saying this again, that, so either, either we need to put it in the bid that we're approving, or we need to go forward with the assumption that we're not going to do that work. Like, I don't want a change order in June for another $50,000. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I am really clear about this. Either put it in the base bid if it's important enough for us to do it, and it's critical to us getting a good scope completed by September, or go forward with the assumption you are not going to do that work. Because I, for one, am not going to approve a change order in June for you to do work that you're telling us about right now, but you didn't include in your base bid. I just think that's a little bit of a bait and switch, and I don't really want to go there. So that's it for me.
I apologize for that. It's not intended to be a bait and switch for sure. But what we're trying to do is be methodical and not spend money until we get to a point where everyone's feeling like this is going to the next step. And in addition, it's really not feasible to get geotechnical cost because we don't know, we're putting on two additions, three additions. What are we geotechnicaling? You know what I mean? What, what are we doing with the scoping of the pipes? These parameters, we're hoping some of these will come up. The building scan, we could get a price for that and just give that to you. But if you decide you're not renovating the building, that would be wasted money. You know what I mean? So.
Yeah, and we won't decide whether to renovate the building until September. So we shouldn't be doing that scan until after we make that decision, which is the same place we ended up last week when we had this conversation.
We could wait then.
For you to be bringing it up now makes me think that you think that we should do that work. And all I'm saying is, if you think as the expert that we should be doing that work, it should be in your bid. And if you agree that it is not necessary until we decide to move forward, then we shouldn't include it in the base bid.
So the building scan, we don't need to do until you decide you want to actually do the renovation.
You just, you just mentioned to Mr. Winters that you thought you would be coming back to us for expanded work in the June-July timeframe was your exact quote. So June-July, we are not going to have a final presentation, and we're not going to have a direction at that point.
So the only thing I would ask for your consideration of, if we're renovating and gutting a certain area and we have to tie the sanitary lines into that, I may want to scan those sanitary lines to confirm the scope of work, whether we have to rip up slabs to replace the piping, scope those out so that we could develop the appropriate cost for you. That's the only caution I would add to that. There may be some investigation that would be appropriate as we're developing the solutions that would be worthwhile to confirm the scope and then confirm the cost a little better. That's all.
So if you think that you need to do those things in order to generate a cost that you're going to come to us with in September, put them in your bid. That's it. I don't, I don't want to debate it with you. I don't want to negotiate it with you. I'm just telling you, if you come back to me in June or July and say, hey, we didn't tell you this, but now we think we want to do this in order to get you a good price, I'm going to say, no, get me a price without it, and then you're going to have to estimate it to the best of your ability. And you may be wrong, or you may be right. I don't know, but I'm willing to take that chance. That's me. The rest of the board may feel differently.
The only thing then you could do is give a not to exceed to, to be determined because I don't have a number on that, because I don't know what we're doing. I apologize.
And like I said, we talked about this last week, and I think we got to the same place where you said it's not necessary until you decide to move forward. So hearing you tell Mr. Winters that it was probably something you'd come back to us to in June or July tells me you think it is necessary in order to get a price. So I, I, I'm just not sure exactly what you're telling us because I'm hearing you say we should probably do this in June or July, but it's not necessary until we get to the price.
We'll, we'll give you budgets then without any further investigations, and we'll have to probably indicate that there could be some impact, and we'll put a contingency on it, I guess, is, is the only answer I can give you because I can't come up with that number right now. I apologize. I don't have the scope to come up with the number. It's not possible.
Ms. Alston?
Yeah, thank you for this information. I have several points to say. First, I do, I do understand that a lot of what we're talking about is contingent on the presentation from PFM. So I understand that. I do want to say that I am not sure of all of our assumptions that were used in the five-year budget projection. And I would like more detail presented to the board about that with, with numbers, not as a narrative. I, I am just unsure because it was not, it was not shown to the board. So I do want to see that, if, if we could, please. When we started this process, we did it with a lot of, a lot of community buy-in. And we had a lot of community involvement. We identified many areas of educational improvement that we were trying to attain. And here I feel like there's a disconnect about what we're talking about with improvements because we're talking about HVAC and wiring and to keep things warm and safe and dry, which is not the educational improvement goals that we were talking about with the new build. So we talked about the educational programming in a new build. We talked about community space. We talked about the environment for our teachers and staff. We talked about revamping the traffic flow on campus. We talked about, you know, scheduling changes, a lunch and learn, having natural light in our art rooms, small and large group instruction spaces for students, increased collaboration among teachers. And here, and then, and we talked about that being what Methacton will have for the next 50 years. And what I'm hearing here tonight is that we're talking about systems, wiring, modulators, getting more life out of this old building, repurposing and reconfiguring for something that we would have for the next 20 years. And I just feel there's a lot of lost value when we're talking about the spending millions of dollars when you look at an amortized cost of 50 versus 20 years. I think that's really something we need to consider. What is the value that we would be getting out of a renovation for 20 years? I also don't know that we have fully explored the delta between our borrowing capacity and the budget that was given or the, the cost estimate that was given for a new build, given the R cap possibilities, because that might help solve some of that. Now, I don't know, I was there at that meeting with the elected officials and, you know, I don't know how likely it is we would get the R cap, but I, I really think that that should also factor into this decision-making here. I would like to, before we go forward with the renovation, you mentioned Pleasant Valley High School. I think we should be, get a detailed presentation about what, you know, how that worked, and I, I would just be interested to know. I, I'm not against moving forward with this motion tonight or with, with this possibility to look at the renovation. But what I think we need to do, instead of looking at the renovation alongside of a building that we could not possibly build because it's too expensive for our community, I would like to echo what Ms. Cleary and what Ms. Graff were saying, that we should be looking at a renovation alongside of, of feasible, feasibly cost building and, and compare tho- those apples together, you know, and see what are we getting, for how long are we getting it? And what are we really providing to the taxpayers and the students and this whole community by just now looking at renovation? I do not think that's what we should be doing.
Other comments? Ms. Steele?
Good evening. Thank you so much for the presentation. I do have some, I do have a question or a few questions, rather. First, I am looking forward in looking at the planning and the, and the phasing. I'm, I'm looking forward to learning more information about the phasing in the modular classrooms and the academic impact of the renovation. I specifically remember during presentations regarding when we were deciding to move forward with a design for a new high school or renovating, I specifically remember seeing a significant impact on the academic spaces. I have, I have worked as an educator through a renovation, and it is quite an experience to ask students to analyze a close read on an 11th grade text and have construction workers throwing cement down on top of your classroom and hearing them yell at each other. It does kind of kill the experience. So that being said, and that's just one example. There's also, there was crumbling roof at one point. It's a lovely building now. That being said, but I'm very interested in that because there's the cost of the modulators and there is, what I remember from that presentation was how significant the impact is based on the setup of the building currently. That's what I remember. And it seemed really hard to do without it impacting significantly on academics. So that's one part. That was more a statement, not a question, sorry. But the question that I do have is, and forgive me because I am learning, since we have gone, because I do kind of echo what Ms. Alston has said and what Ms. Cleary and Ms. Graff has said, which is, and it, for me, it comes from a part of, I don't want to get to September 2025 and be like, man, you know, I wish we had something about maybe a toned-down building because that would be another delay, and delay is money. So that being said, I'd really like to see our options. Since we have gone through schematic design, does that make it a little bit easier to say, well, if we remove these things or do something here, this is where, does that make sense? Does that make that process a little easier, or am I just kind of imagining things that don't exist?
Yeah, it's certainly a lot easier now that you have a baseline and you know the number that you've already created and the square footage that you've created and the layout of the entire campus at that point. We were going to go through a value engineering process, not necessarily to save money, but there could have been opportunities to at least reduce a little bit during that process. There's certainly an opportunity to go back and revisit those if that's what the district would like to do, to, you know, bring it down to a certain square footage and a certain number. Can't make any promises there, but.
I'm not asking you to make, I'm trying to understand options. So say we get a number from PFM that we can afford, and it's okay, and I, I do want to make clear, I think we should look at, and, and I don't have a problem with the motion tonight, because I think we need both pieces of information, honestly. But if we were to get a number for PFM and we were to say, okay, we have this number, can we, what would, would we be able to say, well, okay, if we move these pieces or maybe this, if we removed this programming from the building, would we be able to say, okay, if we remove this programming, then we get this building, and we would be able to decide that? Or is that information that we would have to tell you? Does that make sense? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes, and, and so we've, we've gone through the whole process, trying to understand the program of the building.
Yes.
And we came up with, you know, a baseline, a minimum square footage.
Yep.
And then a maximum square footage, and we landed somewhere in the middle.
Got it.
So if we go back down to the original, you're going to, you know, sacrifice some things, but you know, you certainly have that information available to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that. And I guess I also do want to say, I guess this is more of a statement, rather, that I do want to say that I think it would be important to make sure that we do our homework as, right now, to look at both of those options because we have, like, since before I have been on the board, this has been a discussion point. There have been so many presentations and discussions and tours on why this building is not worth renovating. And I feel like we need to look at all the options now because I do think of some things that I know that I can't unknow, which is the humidity and words like mold and a leaking pool going somewhere. Like, these are things that I can't unknow now that they're there, and it does make me, you know, it, it makes me wonder about the true health of the building, which I know will be assessed, and I trust that we'll, we'll all make good decisions here. But I think we need to do our homework now so there's no more delays. Thank you.
Any other comments to my left? Ms. Purdue?
I do want to say thank you for the presentation. I think my perspective, and I, I express my concern I guess my unhappiness with where we are with having to pivot. I appreciate that you call it resetting, right? Because we are in times where a lot of us have to do resetting and look at everything and aspect based on what's going on in our environment. And I think for our community, it makes sense for us to reset to make sure, right? We have, we have a certain number that we were targeting, and we know that's not feasible. So I do appreciate the use of the word resetting because I think that's where we are. I think last week I brought up my concern as far as having to make this decision and feeling that it was rushed, right? And I know we're pivoting. There's timelines that we still need to hit. I think it's already been brought up that based on where we are now and then having to reset, I mean, each time we delay, there's a cost associated with the renovation. And, and I know I'll go back to when it was just a matter of fixing the HVAC, it caused this amount, right? A matter of fixing the pool that's leaking will cause this amount. The longer and longer we wait, there is a higher cost associated to get the work done. But I also know, and I think as Ms., as it was mentioned by Ms. Steele, there's things in this building that many of us know as this, right? We all went on the tour, and we know even when we think about our apartment program here, we have places in this building that really need some help, right? And so it's a matter of, when you think about it, what does it make sense? I know, I think I heard warm, safe, and
Dry.
And dry, right? But I don't think that's, that's the only thing that we set out to have in this building, right? We've talked about the putting the building together that really catered to bringing our students the education facility that they need, right? And I think while warm, safe, and dry may be just the bare minimum, there's more that we can afford to, we, we hope to give to our students and our staff. And I think right now where we are, while we're resetting, I'm okay with this proposal to have this feasibility done. But I would like to challenge to say, and it is based on the things that have been asked already, and I think many of the board directors stated it so eloquently. But the goal is not just to look at this, the renovation. We've already invested a significant amount of money into looking at construction, new construction. And I think we can try to get something based on where we are now, whether that means dropping off some things or realigning some of the things that were priority and trying to see what else can we gain. So I will hope and I will challenge the administration for us to have, to be able to have the opportunity to have that, whether it's in a special to have the opportunity to have that, whether it's in a special meeting, or anything else that we need, because it's been brought up, what are the assumptions in our five-year projections, right? We're still missing a presentation from PFM, which I think is very critical for us to proceed, whether it's with renovation, or even anything else that we are able to pivot from the work that's already been done. So I think there's a significant amount of work that's needed, and I will go back to what was said, we do definitely need, when we look at the assumptions in the five-year projection, I think it would be nice to have a really clear understanding of what that assumption is, so we can all really understand what is in there, is there something that we need to look at? I feel like we got a little bit of an overview, but I don't think it's enough for us, and we're certainly missing more information from PFM in reference to our budget capacity. So I would say that while this work is going on, or if the board decides to proceed with this feasibility study, that we also work in parallel to look at what we can gain from the work that's been done already, and whether that means certain things change, and our priorities shift as far as the things that we wanted to have in here. And I think maybe looking at, is there, is there opportunities to do a phasing approach to this also, right? And I'm thinking, and I'll ask the question, is that something, if you were to do a phasing approach, I'm guessing they usually come with a higher price tag also?
When you say phasing, are you referring to building maybe some parts and deferring some parts to later?
Yes.
Of course, when we built them later, they would cost more, you know, just by virtue of, you know, the time.
Yeah.
As has been mentioned by one of the directors already, but also, in addition to that, remobilizing and everything. I think the challenge is going to be with the team, trying to figure out what part can you function the high school with, without, by deferring some components, if they're to be deferred. But, you know, phasing projects are done, they're usually more at a university and other types of places where they have the core facilities, and you're adding on, the challenge here is, majority of the savings, I think, would probably come from core facility either being reduced, or being deferred, as you just outlined, and how do you function, you know, a high school without some of those core facilities, which are the probably areas you could cut costs. So I think we can certainly look at it, but it's going to be very difficult, I think, to start the high school, you know, and defer something for five years, or whatever timeline is agreed to.
And then only, I mean, my last point, I think we'll go back to, and I think Ms. Graff was trying to express that, is just, because we're to the point that we won't have, I guess, a final direction presentation to the, to the board till September, I think the goal is to try to minimize spend here, right? So not signing up to do any projects that, or any testing that may not be, may not be needed, right? So, and we're, and I don't know how much we can express that, just because I think every amount of money spent is significant, so we really want to minimize that, and I think that's where that questioning, line of questioning was really going, and just making sure we're not signing up for something that we end up doing, some type of testing, and then deciding it's not needed, because we go a different direction with this. So I will ask, I mean, if we can get the PFM, and then the budget, as far as the five-year assumptions, and I'm asking this to Dr. Zerbi, and then also in parallel to this feasibility study, having a different analysis, look at some type of options evaluated, based on when we get the update from PFM, what's within our range?
Yeah, Ms. Perdue, I was going to summarize that for everyone, so what I'm, what I'm hearing tonight is, we establish the financial update inclusive of the assumptions we did in the five-year projection, and then, as you, as you were mentioning, in parallel, assuming the, the motion on the agenda is approved this evening, we would spend no additional funds beyond what's on the proposal, as well as no additional studies associated with that, unless something comes before the board that they so want to, you want to consider. And in parallel with this process, to reevaluate the new construction, and the potential of removing options, and how we might be able to fit that into whatever the, the financial projections share with us. Is, is anybody have an objection to any of that, that direction? That's, that's what I'm getting. Okay, thank you for the feedback. Thank you, gentlemen, this evening, and members of the board, thank you so much for your input on this, we do appreciate it. Certainly, you know, this, this is certainly a challenging position, but one that I believe will give us a better picture of what we're going to be able to afford, and what we're going to be able to do for the district in the long term. So thank you for your input. Next on the agenda, I have Dr. Gravenese to give us a special education update, and you should have a copy of this, of this presentation at your seat. Dr. Gravenese? I'm sorry for interrupting you, Ms. Gravenese, I, I think we're having trouble hearing you, so I don't know if it's on, or you might have to speak more directly into it, tilt the mic up towards yourself.
Hi.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, so just as a quick overview, thank you so much for having me tonight, I appreciate it. Tonight is going to be an update on the progress we've made on our 25-26 school year planning, and then an overview of our district mental health programming. So, as you know, we've discussed, we have had four key areas that we have been focused on as we organized our special education programming, that's been oversight, compliance, structure, and looking at our third-party vendors. So just as a brief overview, under oversight, we have aligned our supervisors to specialty areas, so that we can have a continuum K to 12, to make sure the programming makes sense. We have added the trainings that are associated with our comprehensive plan and our cyclical monitoring plan, so we've mapped out the next three years of trainings that are needed for teachers, support staff, and those that we want to provide to families with compliance. We have had continued training with our school psychologists, and we are ending our one-on-one coaching with the Skyview and our COLA staff, that's happening this month. With regards to our structure, we continue our planning for our complex learner classrooms. We've also created behavioral frameworks within the elementary buildings, and created a special education teacher schedule that's common at all of the buildings, so that all of our special education teachers are able to meet with the teachers that they're planning with. We've looked at our third-party vendors and reviewed our current programs and contracts. We have looked at our contractor caseloads and schedules to ensure we're being as efficient as possible. And then we've looked at our mental health services, and our needs, and then the provider's effectiveness. This actually is what triggered the presentation for the mental health services, because I'm not sure if you're aware of what we offer, or how we deliver those services, so we thought it was a good idea to just explain this. So, within our mental health supports, we have a number of services that are available, starting with the school counselor, and then pivoting to the different sorts of teams and services we have available. I'm going to go through them, just so you understand who is part of that process and what it looks like. So first is our, our, first are our school counselors. So we have, in the district, 14 school counselors, a career counselor, and our climate counselor. And while I only have a few of the things, high-level things that they do on a daily basis, they are just an integral part of our ability to function. They are the direct contact for students, they counsel students on their caseload, there are academic planners, they set goals for students, they are there when students are at their best, and also at their worst, they deliver crisis intervention and support, they're advocates for students, they're first line of contact for parents, the teachers and administrators utilize the counselors as liaisons, and they deliver curricular lessons. So our counselors really are our first point of contact for our students when they need any sort of mental health assistance. From there, if a student is having some concerns, they'll pull together either the core team, MTSS team, or child study team, each building calls it something different, we're working on getting common language together. But pretty much what it is, is the school's core team of administrators, counselors, nurse, school social worker, the mental health counselors and school psychologists, they come together typically on a weekly basis, just to touch base on the students, make sure that we're looking at their mental health and well-being, looking at what short-term supports and strategies we can deliver through an MTSS process, we determine if there's a higher level of care that's needed, and what those resources will look like, we determine if we need to make a referral to our SAP program, our Student Assistance Program, SAP, or our Drug and Alcohol Counselor, and then this team oversees progress and timelines for services to make sure that students are making adequate progress. Also included on that team is our, our school psychologists, we have four full-time school psychologists in the district, and we contract two full-time and six part-time psychologists. Now, our psychologists are people who write our reports, they conduct psychological and academic assessments, they identify students with learning and behavioral disabilities, and they provide diagnostic information and recommendations for determining special education We have a district social worker, she's Wonder Woman with how she supports the entire district. Those that know Jennifer Johnson knows what an invaluable resource she is for our district. She serves as the broader connection between school, home, and the community, she supports families with crisis needs, navigates a wide range of resources in school and in the community, she'll conduct home visits, looking at what are the challenges students are facing outside of school, what are the barriers to getting into school, and helps to break those barriers down. She completes residency and attendance checks, she is part of our inter-agency meetings, ensuring that parents and families still feel connected with the school, even when they need to be educated outside of the school. She's our homeless liaison, and also confirms our free and reduced lunch eligibility. She's a vital connector with making sure families have community resources. So if the core team, SAP team, core team decides the SAP team is needed, or if the drug and alcohol referral is needed, what they do is, they make the referral, they contact the families, and explain, we have these additional services that are available, these are more targeted interventions, they're offered through therapeutic approach, they're all research-based curriculums and programming. So if it's through the SAP program, the company Aldersgate is our vendor, they're at the high school one day per cycle, our COLA one day per cycle, and at Skyview, half day per cycle. And if it is for our drug and alcohol counselor, available from the Lincoln Center through a grant, they are at the high school two days per cycle. And so they're made, referrals made to the program, the family's contacted, permission is granted, and then the student enrolls in the program. So the services are delivered during the school day, they are evidence-based counseling programs, and once the program is complete, the student is referred back to their original school counselor, just to make sure there's that continuity of care. If, after the program is completed, the student still needs additional support, they come back together through that main core team to discuss what other resources we have We also have mental health counseling that's available, we utilize Central to provide our mental health counseling, they are, they are our clinicians that are in the building at the high school, we have three clinicians, our COLA has one, Skyview has one, and the elementary shares two. This is a service that's connected to a student's IEP as a related service, we have tailored mental health supports and services that are tracked based on an individual student's needs, so the level of supports adjusted based on how the student is progressing towards their goals, and then the goal is to gradually, gradually titrate these services to reduce the intensity of support. This allows for a very flexible approach, but again, this is for our special education students only. We also have the REACH program, which is a longer mental health program that is a more intensive intervention. REACH provides daily one-on-one and group counseling, it's a long-term tailored mental health service, it's consistent support inside of school and outside of school, as students have, students and families have 24/7 access to the clinicians. And the clinicians also are available to provide family resources, family counseling, if the family would like to participate. We have seven, I'm sorry, six professionals across all the buildings, two at the high school, two at our COLA, one at Skyview, and one at the elementary schools. If a student is referred to REACH, they are still part of our clinical team, they work closely to keep progress on the student, and the goal ultimately is to graduate out of the program. When a student's needs are beyond our capacity at school, we coordinate with partial hospitalization programs and alternative programming specific for mental health. So it's important to note, this is different than an alternative school for behavioral needs, alternative programming for learning needs, this is specific to mental health needs. So our district social worker, Jennifer Johnson, and our special education supervisor remain as the main point of contact, working with the family and serving on that interagency committee to make sure that the student's needs are being met through this outside program. They attend meetings, typically once a month, where they're able to monitor progress, and make sure the student's needs are being met. So why are we talking about mental health? Why is it important for you to know about the services that we offer? So I put some statistics together for you, just so that we're all on the same page with the state of mental health in our world. So, in national statistic, that one in five students in the US experience a mental health disorder each year. So if we mathematically use that ratio to our student numbers, that could be 917 students. Right now, we are currently servicing 402 students in some capacity with our mental health supports. This is not counting our school counselors, and having all of the students on their caseload, these are for our targeted mental health interventions. Statistically, 50% of all lifetime cases of mental illness begins by age 14, so it is very important, we have a strong early intervention system in place for students to be successful. I included some information for you from our 2023 Pennsylvania Youth Survey, it's called the PAES survey, it's a snapshot of students in grades six, eight, 10, and 12, and the, the highlights, the key factors that really drew our attention from the data this year, last year, were the factors that were continuing, contributing to the continued need of mental health services. Suicidal ideology, though declining in, compared to the county, still was high. Anytime we have students experiencing suicidal ideology, it's an immediate of concern. Depressive symptoms had increased, and that looks like depression, food insecurity, and sleeping less. Exposure to explicit content earlier with individual technology, so the things that students at a younger age are seeing on phones and tablets is negatively impacting their mental health. And the last one was peer and familial attitudes towards antisocial behavior. There was a 54% increase in the student's perception that it was okay to do negative things, antisocial behaviors, and they felt their family and their friends support that kind of thinking. So knowing this, sorry, spam risk there, knowing that we have 70% of youth that receive mental health services, in, if they're going to get them, they're going to get them across the school setting, I implore you to really consider what is important for our district when it comes to mental health programming. Schools are often the first, and sometimes only, point of contact for a student's mental health support. Statistically, students with untreated mental health disorders are three times more likely to be suspended, and two times more likely to drop out. So addressing mental health is essential for not only reducing suspension and dropouts rates, but supporting students with where they are, and making sure that we're looking to the whole child, and making sure we're having all of their needs met. but supporting students with where they are and making sure that we're looking to the whole child and making sure we're having all of their needs met. Lastly, when it comes to dollars and cents, statistically, every dollar invested in school-based mental health services yields $2 to $10 in savings. So beyond just improved academic achievement and reduced special education and juvenile justice costs, the cost for when students have to participate in a program outside of our walls, the numbers are quite expensive. It can range from $38,000 to $100,000, dependent upon the need. So providing supports in the school keeps students in their least restrictive environment and is more cost-effective than placing them out. So in closing, we're deeply committed to building a comprehensive, integrated mental health program, providing a full spectrum of care for our students. Our work with this is strategic, data-informed, and student-centered with a focus on early intervention, meaningful outcomes, and supporting the whole child. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gravenese. Are there questions from the board to my left? Ms. Austin?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I just have two questions. So the, going back to the supervisor alignment with specialty areas, is that, that's the alignment that was previously by grade level or by age?
Yeah, so we're still having them have their caseload of students by grade level. So Karina Todd is K to four, Dani Faustin is five to eight, Joelle Mench is nine to 12. However, we know we have programming that exists that when we're looking at it just in isolation of just this one piece, we're missing making sure we have that full continuum. So in addition to what they're doing, for instance, Dani's going to look at our autistic support program in K to 12. So we're looking at the curriculum and the resources and making sure we have everything covered and it's not just piecemealed together. Joelle, having a background in being a school psychologist, is overseeing our psychologists, really to make sure that we have that system in place for tracking and compliance and making sure the permissions are issued and what does a comprehensive evaluation look like and utilizing her in that capacity. Karina's going to be looking at our interventions that we have across the board as well as our emotional support programming. And where are gaps and holes and what do we need to be able to support students? And down the road, bring them back because we want to make sure we have a full continuum of supports within the district.
Okay, so that's really an and then?
An and, yeah.
Okay, great. And then I just was curious, the one in five statistic that you mentioned, do we have any sense of the number of students receiving therapy or counseling from like a private pay provider? Like, do we have any sense of the, like, from PACE, does that tell us?
No, unfortunately, they don't talk about specific mental health counseling or how many students are participating outside of the school. That 402 number is our central REACH outside placement and SAP and drug and alcohol counselors combined.
Okay, so it is maybe likely to assume, you could likely assume that there are additional mental health needs that the students have that they're receiving
Yeah, I would
care through at their
Correct. Yep, they're taking care of that too. They're either their private insurance or their family is out of pocket paying for that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions from members to my left? Ms. Perdue?
Thank you for the update. It's interesting when you give us the numbers in reference to the cases. Now, are these, is the information you provided in reference to that based on after COVID? Or is it just overall?
You know, the one, I didn't do a comparison to before COVID. I just looked for the statistics that are happening right now. So I did source where they came from, like ones the World Health Organization, just because I thought that they were all very reputable sites.
Yeah, okay, that's interesting. And then my main question was, in the past, I know that we've had opportunities to have grants to support some of our programs. There is still opportunities to get grants just because I know a lot of the ones that we received from COVID, you know, long gone and there were no discussions about any new ones. But are we seeking out any additional grants? Because I know before we used to have like announcement, like Dr. Anstap will announce that she was able to write for a certain grant and was able to get awarded a certain amount of grant that will go to supporting some of the programs. Because you definitely have a long list of programs here and a lot of staff to support it. So I'm just, I noticed one of them you have is based on a grant. But I'm just wondering, do we have anything coming in or any grants that you're looking after?
So two that I can speak of, one through the Lincoln Center. The grant for the drug and alcohol counselor reached out to them and that is able to continue into next year. So we need to get the paperwork from them to get them signed on for an additional year, but that's been a wonderful addition. Doctors Erby signed, wrote a grant for us for obtaining an additional school psychologist, which has been very helpful. But at this time, we don't have any other active grants for mental health funding.
That's a shame, but hopefully things change soon. Just because I think based on your numbers, we're definitely seeing, you know, where there's a lot of support that's needed and almost make you question where, I mean, even when you think about, I think it was one that caught my eye was even REACH when we think about the number of the staff, like two at the high school, two at Arcola, one at a Skyview, and then one for all the elementary schools. You almost, I know we also have, that's not the only program that we have and we have staff, we have school counselors available. But makes you wonder if there's any of these that we, we need more support or more staff at just to help the programs run well, just to make sure we do have enough to support our students. So and Dr. Erby, thank you for the grant for the school, I think psychologist. And hopefully we will see some opportunities to get more grants.
We are looking very closely at our delivery of all of our programs as we've been looking through our third-party vendor contracts and making sure that we have everything aligned to what we need. So we certainly are working with our companies to make sure that they're giving us everything we need for our kids. The need keeps growing, however, we're trying to make do with what we have.
And then when you speak about third-party vendor, because you're dealing with a lot of vendors here, I'm just wondering, is there opportunity to, I'm guessing it's just you have to go to different sources because they all offer different programs. But is there like a vendor that is like a one-stop shop for all or?
They all do something a little bit differently. So we are always looking to make sure that we have everything the best and what's available for our students. So we're always keeping our eye out for what's out there. But we're looking to make sure we're being as, you know, thorough and yet efficient in what we're doing. The PACE survey, when we participate in that, our SAP program is free. So that's one of the reasons why every two years we do that because the SAP program is, helps all of our schools and is just a great program for students and an additional support and free. So that's one of them that we just, we have to do it just so we can get that program available.
And when is the PACE survey rendered again?
It's every odd, odd-numbered year. So it'll be in the fall of '25 is when they'll do it again.
Fall of 2025. Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
Other questions down here? Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Gravenese. I mean, I definitely agree with you about mental health support being, you know, extremely important. And I appreciate all of this. I just have a few questions to better understand a couple of things. You talked about on one of the slides that we're servicing 402 students in some capacity with mental health supports. And then I was looking at, and that came after you talked about the slide on SAP or drug and alcohol referrals. And so I'm wondering, of those 402, do you have any information that you could share with us on the number of students that are participating in the drug and alcohol counselor program?
I can get that for you. I don't have the exact number with me, but I certainly can provide that in a board memo for you. So you have that information?
I'm just curious, I'm just trying to get a handle in my mind about how large of a problem that is these days.
Typically, if a student is caught with, you know, vaping or doing something inappropriately related to drug and alcohol, they're referred to the program. The family has to agree to the student being a part of the program, but it's a research-based curriculum that they go through. It's about 10 to 12 weeks where the counselor and the student are meeting and they're, you know, there's an educational component and then a counseling component that's associated with it. I've heard wonderful things about the counselor who is delivering it through the Lincoln Center for us. Her name is Cosme. She's been wonderful. But I'll get you those exact numbers.
I guess I would be interested because you mentioned vaping, not that I'm downplaying vaping whatsoever, I'm not. But I would be interested to know approximately how many students are in that program? And then sort of the difference between how many have been referred relative to drugs. I would keep vaping separate and then, because when I think, when I think of the word drug, I think of hard drugs. So if I could keep those separate and alcohol, if it's possible, I don't want to create too much work. I just wanted to get a sense of where we are.
With vaping, it's, most times they're vaping marijuana. So that's, you know,
This is how clueless I am. Okay.
That's okay.
If that's the case, you can keep it with the drug. Keep it with the drug. I thought you meant tobacco. And then SAP and REACH, can you sort of outline for us the, the different services that are provided in each? Because I frankly don't know.
Sure.
Okay.
So let's start with SAP. So SAP can be a referral from a family member, parent, sibling, anonymous online, could be a friend that refers, could be a teacher that refers, could be an administrator, nurse, whomever, anyone is able to refer a student to the SAP program. And it's on the application, it is a series of descriptors of why you're concerned about the student. Are they withdrawn? Are they appearing depressed? Have they stopped participating in things that they used to love? Are there troubles at home? Are parents going through something and they just want extra support for their kids? Have their grades gone down? Are they withdrawn? Are they sleeping during class? Is it, you know, conflicts with peers that they're having? So it could be a number of things of that nature. What happens is we have a SAP team that's gone through the training. Typically, so I can speak, you know, with the high school, Mrs. Thompson is our liaison, she's our school nurse. She then is on a team with three other people. They meet during their duty period where they go through the referral and then they assign it to one of the people on the team. That person reaches out to the home, shares with them, you know, we have concerns, we want to help partner with you. Are you open to having your child come and meet with this counselor so we can talk through whatever issues are going on? It's more of a short-term intervention. Typically, it's throughout the school year or less. So when the new year, school year starts, everything starts fresh. With regards to REACH, the one thing with SAP too, the child has to be consenting, that they want to participate in it because it's, the age of 14 is the age of consent. At the younger grades, the parent obviously will, you know, give permission for that, but they, they're the ones that say that if the parent, if the student can do it or not, the parent, I'm sorry, and the student, we hope would be an active participant in it. With regards to REACH, REACH is a more intensive, it's our, within the district, it's our most intense mental health support. It's for students who, for a variety of reasons, need more. So whether it's, they've experienced trauma in some capacity, they are suicidal. They are so depressed they can't function. Whatever, whatever the need is, they could be emotionally dysregulated for whatever reason and they need that daily therapy along with the daily group therapy so that they're able to practice and work on those very direct skills. And then from there, you know, graduate from the program. It typically can be anywhere, it's typically about the year, but we've had students this year who have graduated from the program out and then, you know, their point of contact becomes their school counselor. It's been a very large help for a lot of students who cannot otherwise make it through the day. So they have this important place to be able to, you know, if they're feeling upset and something's going on, they can go down to their counselor and meet with them. They obviously have a recurring meeting time for their individual counseling and their group counseling. But if something comes up, having them on site's been an invaluable resource. A lot of times lunch is so overwhelming for kids. It's, you know, 500 kids in this large space at once, they're able to go and have lunch with their counselor. One of the great things is they're able to reach out to the counselor nights and weekends through texting. And then the families also have that contact information. So if a student goes into crisis for any reason, they're immediately able to reach out to their counselor. The counselor then is able to either coach the family into you need to go to the hospital right now or let's practice the skills that we worked on that we can help get you back to baseline. The great thing about it too is they're a part of our core team at the school. So if something's going on with that student, while they won't share the details of what they talk through and break that confidentiality, they're able to loop us in so we know that the student's going through something so that we're able to monitor and adjust.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Any other questions to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for this. This is so clear and helpful to me. Just because so many of these programs sound similar and seem like they overlap, but they really don't when you talk through it like this. And it just, I think it just really becomes much clearer in this sort of format for me. So I really appreciate that. The only question I had was, just help me understand the difference between our mental health counseling team and our school psychologists.
Sure. So our school psychologists, they do psychoeducational testing. They don't do counseling. So they are, they're pretty much, 98% of their responsibility is report writing. So if a student needs to be determined for, you know, the family or the school believes the child is potentially in need of an IEP, the school psychologist is the person who does that testing. So whether it's cognitive testing, achievement testing, social-emotional testing, autism testing, they are in that realm of testing students, writing reports. So they do not do direct counseling with students. The only time we had that happen was when we were in the middle of a crisis and we called all hands on deck, every counselor, social worker, mental health provider, everyone, we needed to come help us with a, we had a crisis going on. But they had to pause what they were doing. We don't want to be late with reports because we get in trouble from the state when we're late. So that was, that was the only time we used them in that capacity. But they also then are part of an IEP team, so they meet with families, they explain what the report means. Does your student have a disability? Do they not have a disability? And then they provide recommendations to the IEP team for how to support the student in that environment. We'll also use them if we need some sort of screen, screening done, they'll also provide that. So part of our MTSS process, before a child will go to evaluation, we might need either the school counselor or the school psychologist to go in to put eyes on the student, just give us a clinical recommendation. They will serve that purpose as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. This was really helpful.
Of course.
Ms. Chandra?
Thank you for this presentation. Going to the mental health stats and you mentioned a little bit about technology and it's not in here, but social media is probably part of that. That has a significant impact, negative impact on mental health. I guess my question is, is the district doing anything to educate the community, particularly parents, about the pitfalls of social media and, and what to look for? I know that the, I attended an SEA webinar about sextortion, which was great, but I would like to see the audience grow because, you know, even if they're not being targeted by sextortion or these kind of extreme things going on, a 14-year-old's Instagram reels are violent and angry and racist and all of these things that the social media companies know are triggering and they'll kind of hook them in. So understanding things like that could possibly help a parent, you know, decide whether or not a social media app is appropriate for their child or not. So, and not just parents, are we doing anything to educate our students on, you know, responsible use of your cell phone or your laptop or whatever?
So yeah, props to the SEA for bringing in that presentation on cyber safety. That was in February. Tonight, actually, I was supposed to be over at Arcola for the Tonight, actually, I was supposed to be over at Arcola for the follow-up to it. Dr. Faustin tapped in for me to, to cover. But tonight we had 27 families and 25 students come to the follow-up, hands-on presentation of cyber safety and parenting in the cyber world and what that means. So we have two concurrent sessions happening. So one is just for parents about what you need to be aware of online for your child. And the other one is for children in grades two, two through ages eight through, no, second grade, so eight years old through 13. And so what they need to be aware of as they are beginning to navigate an online world and what that means and the dangers that exist. We partnered with Mission Kids. They're delivering this program tonight. Lower Providence Police also participated and they were, they were a wonderful assistance for us. They also are coming tonight just to kind of build those relationships with students and families. But to your point, we had 27 adults and 25 kids. So I know people are busy, but we do need to figure out a way to, to reach the masses.
Is there, I mean, some random ideas I have are maybe sending out like flyers of, of maybe an infographic of this is why your kid doesn't look up from their phone and why, why it's addictive or here's a number of emojis and what they mean amongst 14-year-olds and not, and not might, not what you might think it is. Or in my mind, I would have an assembly and make everybody sit down with popcorn and watch The Social Dilemma on Netflix. It's already there. It's so informative. But getting people to come and just sit and listen, I know it's hard, but those are just some ideas.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Graveney? Seeing no other questions, Dr. Graveney, thank you so much for your time this evening and your presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have one final presentation for this evening. This is a budget update. Ms. Steffi, our Director of Business Services, you should have a copy of this at your table. What you're seeing here this evening is pretty much identical to what we presented at the Finance Committee this month. Ms. Steffi?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This presentation will walk through the key stages of budget development, updates on expenditures and revenues, and outstanding considerations as we move toward finalizing the budget. Budget process overview. Our budget development process follows a structured timeline to ensure financial responsibility in alignment with district priorities. The first phase of our budget process is the pre-p preliminary budget review. The pre-p preliminary budget review begins in late October, early November, and serves as the initial phase. During this phase, department and building budgets are closely scrutinized. Necessary adjustments, both reductions and additions, are made based on district priorities. It is also during this phase that we conducted an early assessment of staffing needs. We carefully reviewed anticipated enrollment shifts, retirements, and vacancies to determine necessary staffing adjustments. Positions were removed before presenting the proposed budget to the school board based on the following considerations: enrollment trends, retirement, operational needs. These positions outlined here account for a reduction of about $1.51 million and include: elementary technology integrator, social studies position at Methacton High School, elementary position, Fab Lab Integrator, evening facility supervisor, assistant director of technology, five PCA positions, and an HVAC master mechanic position. These reductions brought us to the proposed preliminary budget presented in January of A February update was presented to the school board last month. Expenditure updates included salary and benefit reductions based on retirements, an adjustment to healthcare based on the second look received from the consortium. Revenue updates included reductions to PISA's and FICA subsidies based on salary changes, as well as changes to regular education and special education subsidies based on the governor's preliminary budget. The total changes for February resulted in a net reduction of $784,950. As part of the March update, we carefully reviewed expenditures with a particular focus on staffing costs. Areas were identified where staffing adjustments could be made without significantly impacting instructional quality or student services. Those positions include a middle-level technology integrator, communications secretary, and an instructional coach. We carefully evaluated our school's security measures to ensure that we are allocating resources effectively while maintaining a safe learning environment for students and staff. Through this review, we made the decision to remove an unarmed security guard position in consideration of the addition of a school police chief. This role would provide professional law enforcement oversight, enhance coordination with external agencies, and strengthen emergency preparedness. A high school activities budget developed with the athletic director has been added and remains consistent with prior years. An athletic trainer has been added with a first-year cost of $138,000. This addition, which was inadvertently omitted during the preliminary budget phase, is critical as we are committed to ensuring the well-being of our athletes. We conducted a thorough evaluation of software expenses to identify opportunities for cost savings while maintaining essential services. Given budget constraints, we focused on reducing or eliminating software programs that were underutilized, redundant, or no longer aligned with district priorities. Also, as part of our budget review, we have prioritized updates to science and foreign language curriculum materials to ensure that students and teachers have access to high-quality, up-to-date instructional resources. A key focus has been the replacement of outdated textbooks and curriculum materials that no longer align with current educational standards, best practices, and student learning needs. We have made a strategic, a strategic investment in literacy by introducing a new literacy program. This initiative reflects our commitment to academic excellence, equity, and ensuring that every student has the skills they need to succeed. As part of our planning, we are anticipating a $500,000 reduction in special education expenditures through strategic adjustments in service delivery. These changes are being considered with the goal of maintaining high-quality support for students while using our resources more efficiently. Our commitment to meeting the needs of students with disabilities remains strong and we will continue to prioritize access to appropriate supports and services. By enhancing internal capacity and aligning resources, we aim to support positive student outcomes and long-term fiscal responsibility. Onto revenues. Due to salary reductions and staffing changes, we have seen a corresponding decrease in FICA and PISA subsidies. Based on recent economic trends and employment data, we are seeing an increase in earned income tax collections. This growth reflects a stronger local workforce and rising wages, leading to higher tax contributions from residents. The district has experienced a decrease in real estate tax revenue due to the sale of a property that was purchased by the township. Since the township is a tax-exempt entity, this property is no longer generating tax revenue, leading to an adjustment in our protected real estate tax increase collections. We continue to monitor potential changes in funding policies that may impact our, our budget and adjust accordingly. Currently, total revenues are projected $139,953,132, while expenditures outlined on the previous slide stand at $138,564,626. This results in a variance of $1,388,506. To account for this variance, we have reduced the real estate tax increase to 4.8%. As a result, the district's fund balance use is minimized to $21,550, while the special education exception stands at $681,088. Next slide. Next steps. An adjustment will be made for North Monco Tech Career Center final budget figures. Workers' compensation figures will be updated to reflect actual costs received. We will continuously review and adjust property assessment data as new information becomes available. With the third look at medical benefits, we will make any necessary adjustments to healthcare costs. We closely, we will closely track charter school enrollment trends and adjust funding allocations as needed to account for any shifts in enrollment there. We will update technology lease figures as they become available. We will adjust interest income as we receive new projections from our banking depositories. These ongoing evaluations will ensure that the final 25, 26 budget remains balanced, aligned with district's financial and educational priorities. Timeline. The proposed final budget will be presented at the April 9 Finance Committee meeting as well as the Board Work Session on April 22. The Board will vote on the proposed final budget at the regular voting meeting on April 29. The final budget will be presented at the May Finance Committee meeting as well as the May Work Session. At the regular voting meeting on May 27, the Board will be asked to approve the final budget. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Are there any comments or questions from the Board, Ms. Cleary?
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. I guess I'll start with your last slide, the, when we vote on April 29 on the proposed final budget. So the Board would expect that there would be no, I'm not sure I'm going to phrase this right, that there would be no additional reductions after April 29? Or could there, is there a possibility that there could be?
There's a possibility that there could be. We're going to receive additional real estate assessments.
And that won't come in until, you won't know that number until after April 29? Is that what you're?
Yeah, that would be, that would be about May 3.
May 3? I also had a question about, sorry, I'm going to put my glasses on. The numbers on slide four. The school, it, it lists the schools' cubed literacy program cross cost as $140,000. Isn't that the keys to literacy?
If that's approved this evening, it would be actually 140 to 200.
Two hundred.
Yeah, that'll be adjusted in the next update.
Okay, so we won't see that update and, because it'll go up. So we won't see that update until finance?
In April, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Yep. Thanks, Ms. Steffi. I guess, you know, where did, and maybe it's actually a question for Dr. Zerbi or Dr. Regina, where are we exactly on the instructional coaches, on if they're in the budget or not? From a perspective, I know that, I just lost track of where we are. Do we have what we want in the budget or not?
Yeah, so we, good question. We currently have five instructional coaches. Four of them are teacher on assignment positions and one of them is a permanent position for instructional coaches.
Thank you. And the only other question I have, I, well, I guess, the, I, no, you mentioned this before, Dr. Zerbi, but the social studies position is a high school position that actually is moving somebody to replace somebody in the middle school, I believe. So it's, somebody who's retiring from social studies in the Arcola. And so there's that constant evaluation that's done, you know, from December through May, more or less, of evaluating how you want to use all your resources. Is this just in one example, right?
That is, that is one example. And to Ms. Cleary's question, you know, we could see reductions, we just received retirements this past week, so we could see reductions. So we also could see, you know, some potential challenges if the, the assessments don't come in proper, like we anticipate. So there could be fluctuations both ways, but, but up until, you know, the, the last moment, we'll be providing that information for the Board's consideration.
And, and to clarify, when, when we do identify if somebody may be announcing their retirement now, there's an evaluation if that position needs to be fulfilled. If that position is, yes, we do need to fill it. I assume, and I know, actually just teeing it up, that the evaluation of what goes in the budget is not where that person exited at. So somebody graduate, somebody retiring with a master's plus 30 at step 16 is not what ends up being in the budget for next year if they retire. We make some other assumption? What is the current assumption on where people land?
A master's plus five is where we budget.
Okay. So originally, in past years, we might have gone entry level, but because of the competitiveness of the supply of teachers, we sometimes have to go outside. So that's why we're a little higher than historically we might have been. And that, it could be higher, we could hire somebody with step 10, we could hire somebody at step two, right? It, it doesn't know, but that's the holding spot and it's not a evergreen from the retirement. So just the last one is the, the Fab Lab Integrator Science. I believe that we had a, a science teacher that was developing the curriculum, obviously that, and trying to find location and facility, obviously that's not happening yet in this particular high school. This individual, so we had that spot. So this individual will be going back as a full-time teacher in '25, '26? Is that correct?
Yes. Any, any of the positions that you see on these slides, there is, either the position's vacant or if a position is currently filled by someone, there is a, a spot for them back in the, in their previous role, let's, let's out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for this. And I appreciate the additional information related to like what we're looking at, what we expect in the future. So one question following along Mr. Winter's question. On slide three, when we look at the positions, did the administration do an assessment of positions to see if there's anything that's duplicative or if we have two teachers teaching a course that maybe only has 10 or 12 students and we could combine them into one class and then, you know, repurpose the teacher into another classroom, for example? I mean, has that assessment been done or are we really looking at only retirement or open positions?
No, as part of the scheduling process, we have that conversation with the principals. Actually, Dr. Sergini and Dr. Regina had up that conversation and talked about the needs, not only at the elementary level, middle level, but also at the high school level. Certainly, it, it gets more challenging at the high school level in terms of how scheduling works, but generally speaking, that, that's always done at this time of the year.
So in essence, there could be additional changes there as a result of that? Maybe, maybe. And then the other question I had is, the proposed final budget coming to Finance Committee April 9, will that have the third look on the healthcare in it?
That will.
And will that also have the tech leases adjustments in them for the actuals or will that not come until maybe the 29th of April?
We will hopefully have that.
So there could be changes between the Finance Committee and the Work Session?
Right, correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
But if, if there were to be, I'd outline them at the Finance Committee about what they may be, so.
So we could at least get a preview and then know what to expect?
Yep, know what you're expecting, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to my left, Ms. Deal?
Thank you for this. I just had a question. I just wanted to follow up off of Mr. Winter's question, just about the coaches, the elementary instructional coaches. That new since Ed Committee, is that someone that was not discussed? I just wanted to make sure.
No, it was the same, trying to maintain the structure of keeping five.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to my left? Ms. Purdue?
I just have one. On, on slide four, with the police chief and then the net salary, I think is the total net salary change? Do you know why that's depicted that way? I don't know if I follow why it's, it's showing that amount as the way it's showing and why it's showing as the...
So essentially, the salary for the police chief adds $160,000. So it's, it's net the reductions and the additions? And I could, I could surely break that out for you next month.
Yeah, if you can do that, just because I think the way it is, is, it's not that easy to follow where that, that changed, like the, the addition of that position, what that will be. will be.
If I could just make a comment to that, so that the full Board's, so I believe in, Ms. Graff, you can certainly chime in on this, but this matter was discussed at the Property Committee meeting, and I think it was agreed upon to move that position forward within the budget, knowing that there's a presentation that needs to come to the Board next month as, as part of that process and the need. So, Ms. Graff, I don't know if you want to add to that or not?
Yeah, actually, and I, I thought about this when you were talking, and then I forgot, but it, we did discuss it in committee, and it is going to come before the Board to decide if we want to move forward with a police chief. So, it was important, I think, for the whole Board to hear the benefits and the potential impact of having that position, and also a true cost benefit analysis just from a security perspective. You know, the way it's shown here, it is a net deficit, but the deficit includes some other reductions that aren't necessarily related. So, it was important for us to essentially break that out and present it to the Board as its own standalone assessment, and then also have Dr. Sorgini talk about the benefits of having that position on staff and what it brings to the district, so that we can make a decision on whether we want to move forward with that. If I remember correctly, I don't know what the other reductions actually are, but I think that the, the police chief position, it basically would have been taking the police chief position and removing the one security, and I think it was still like, maybe it was like a net increase of, I want to say like 80, 100? Oh, was it 120? Was that much? Okay. So, that's where it was, just for ballpark figures for today.
Yeah, I just think that would be important to have, and I, I look forward to hearing the presentation on it, just because at a time where we're looking to reset and refine our budget, I, it's, and I understand the nature of the, as far as we'll hear more about the advantages of making this position, I just want to make sure we are thinking holistically about addition of staff to the budget also. So, I, I will be interested in hearing that. And I really do think maybe a breakdown of that should be a little bit clear as far as the total cost to the district, instead of the way it's presented now.
Absolutely. I'll make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purdue. Any other questions for Ms. Steffi on, on the, seeing no other questions? Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Madam Vice President, that ends the scheduled guests and speakers for this evening. As part of the remaining agenda, we'll go into reports.
All right. So, we're going to reports, the committee reports are attached. For MCIUI, we'll provide an update next, at the next month's meeting, and then North Monco.
Yes, thank you. So, last week at the Work Session, we were pleased to host Dr. Beth Ann Haas, the Director of North Monco Tech, and we heard some student voices about their experience. And we also recognized first place Skills USA District Competition Winners from Mathacton, who will compete at the Skills USA State Conference on April 2nd, 3rd, and 4th in Hershey. The winners were Elijah Purdue and Avery Smith. And right now, Interested Students Enrollment Forms are being evaluated, and letters will be going out in the next week or two to accepted students in the program. Oh, and actually, as referenced in the budget presentation, we did approve the budget. It came in slightly under the Act One Index, I, it was like 3.79, something like that, close to that. And then, finally, if anybody is interested in fancy cars, the North Monco Education Foundation is hosting the Fourth Annual Car Show up on the campus on Saturday, May 3, 2025. It's from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There is food, awards, and raffles. There's a $20 fee for each car registered, and if you're interested, I bet we could post this on our website. So, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, we'll go to the High School Board Representative for their updates. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On March 4, we had a blood drive, which was a huge success. Many students showed up to help those in need. On top of that, on March 13, there was the first day of, on the, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, was the first day that the school cafeteria brought in freshly made sushi rolls for all students, and they were extremely delicious, if I do say so myself. We were also fortunate enough to have a booth during lunchtime, giving many scholarship opportunities to seniors interested, which was very helpful for seniors like ourselves. On March 14, the underclassmen had a casino-themed semi-formal, which was very fun for the freshmen and sophomore class. And another exciting dance that's coming up for the upperclassmen is prom. Tickets to purchase and sign up for post-prom are both out, being due tomorrow and April 4. And lastly, Minithon has been getting ready for the annual event on April 5. They held a rock-your-socks sale during lunch for two weeks, from March 10 to the 21st. And March 21 was also stall day, which was so much fun with our classmates and teachers, and also for a good cause. They also held a dine and donate at the Eagleville Tap House this past Sunday, March 23. And after school on April 2, they will hold their tie dye t-shirt event in preparation for the big day.
Additionally, the Guys and Dolls Musical for the Theater Company was a success, running three nights from February 27 to March 1. Thank you to all the seniors for your contributions to the theater program. Other music students attended the PMEA Region Six Chorus Festivals from March 13 to 15 at Garnet Valley High School, and Chalice Matthew Chung will be attending the All-State Festival at Kalahari from April 9 to April 12. In other news for clubs, the Mathacton Helping Paws Club held a trivia night from 5 to 7 on March 13. Academic Decathlon competed at states at Pope John Paul High School from March 14 to 15, and they came in sixth place. The Science Fair team also attended their annual MCSRC, which is a Science Fair competition at Germantown Academy on March 17. The Class of 2028 Congress held a dine and donate event on March 21. And looking forward, Mathacton High School Warrior Performance Group will have its annual showcase on Friday, March 28. And the Future Business Leaders of America Club will be heading to the state competition at the Hershey Convention Center from April 7 to April 9. So, good luck to everyone competing. On April 11, Mathacton will be bringing back the International Festival with the help of the Multicultural Club and other clubs such as BSE, which is Black Student Union, and ASA, which is Asian Student Alliance. They're looking for volunteers to help with this event, and the Environmental Club will also be celebrating Earth Day in the courtyard all day on April 11. For families with seniors who are graduating, graduation lawn signs are available for purchase until April 18 for $20. And that is all we have for this month. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And then, we will, yes, and we will dismiss the student Board reps. Thank you very much for your updates to the Board. And the Foundation will provide an update next month. And with that, we'll go to Ms. Communication, Ms. Groback.
Good evening. I have an update for you on our two communications interns who started working with our team this month. Alex Eels and Janet James are both juniors at the high school, and they have already proven to be very eager, hardworking, and talented individuals. You can already see some of their work on our social media pages, covering events like the dodgeball tournament and the string jamboree. Alex and Janet have been instrumental in assisting with our website redesign project. They've been gathering information about courses, activities, and departments to make the high school website more engaging and informative. Additionally, they're also conducting photo shoots at our schools that we hope will capture the spirit of our students, staff, and community. As for the website, our new district website is nearing completion. We sent it out to the Website Advisory Committee, who is currently reviewing the site. They'll be providing feedback on the navigation, the layout, and the design. We are moving on to working on the school sites, and we are still on track to launch that new website in May. Registration is now open for our Community Education Summer Camps, and we have something for everyone, including Firebirds Theater, Basketball, Chess, Snapology, with topics like amusement park engineering, and Science Explorers, which is focusing on marine biology and the wizarding wonders of science. You can sign up for those at mathacton.org/2025SummerCamps. And as was mentioned, please mark your calendars for the International Festival on Friday, April 11. We're really excited for this one. We're going to be highlighting countries and cultures from around the world, Spain, Brazil, Scotland, India, more than that. You will get to taste some authentic food from all of these countries, and you'll also be treated to performances like percussion and dancing. There will be raffle prizes, it's going to be a lot of fun. So, again, that is April 11. And then, on behalf of the Mathacton Education Foundation, I wanted to do a quick update on the dodgeball tournament. We raised over $22,000 for that event. There were more than 50, there were 50 teams and more than 1,000 people who came out to support, whether they were playing, volunteering, or cheering on. So, thank you so much to everyone who came out and showed their support for that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, we'll go to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Derby.
I have, the Right to Know Monthly Report is posted, as, and there are no other advisements. That ends my report.
Thank you. And then, we'll go to public comment on Board action items. The Board will now take comments on Board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following conclusion of comments on Board action items. And when you're coming up to provide any comments, just please state your name and municipality, so we can have it on record. Thank you.
Brian Urshaw, Lower Providence. Commenting on item 13H, the professional services for the high school project. I'd ask this at last week's meeting, and it'd be good to staff to know, is how much time was spent by the Board, administration, staff, and the public on the new high school construction that has now been shelved? Also, I'd like to know how much in tax dollars was spent on that project that is now going to be essentially washed down the drain? I think it's a pretty sizable number, it'd be good for the public to know that. It really sounds like from the discussion tonight that the Board is not ready to vote on this matter. It seems like certain Board members want to still pursue constructing a new high school, others want to renovate, others aren't sure which way to go. So, before spending another dollar and approving this $162,000 expenditure, figure out what you want to do. I mean, there were three renovation options presented, ranging in price from $95 million to $156 million. That's quite a wide range. You don't know what you can afford yet either. You don't have solid projections that you can rely on. I pointed out last week that projections are wrong. I know for a fact, you haven't considered retirements and projected them, which is going to provide a cost savings, which actually says you could afford more. So, you need to get the projections done, and you can't do that in a month. You got to take at least six to nine, or maybe more, months to figure out what you can afford and get solid projections done. One reason you can't figure out what you want to do is because you don't know what you can afford. And why does PFM need to tell you that? You have a CFO of the district, you have Mr. Winters with a finance background, you should be able to tell what you can afford. You don't need PFM. PFM will come back and tell you you're going to capitalize interest. That's going to look great, but it's a very bad idea. So, by approving this tonight, you're, you're heading down the same road we did with new construction. You have bad projections, and you're really not figuring out where you want to go. So, what is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting the same result referred to as? Anybody know? Insanity. Insanity. You really need to figure out what you want to do here before you spend another tax dollar on this. And regarding the proposal itself, did they put this out for bid? Figure out who can do, provide the best service at the best price? I'd be interested to hear that as well. And I think that's it. So, obviously, I would consider, I would strongly suggest shelving this matter. If it's not going to be shelved, vote no. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Isman, and I live in Lower Providence Township. Good evening, esteemed member of the school board. And Dr. Derby, my name is Laura Isman, I'm a resident here. I wanted to start off by thanking you for dedication. I know the time and the effort you put into this work has not gone unnoticed or unappreciated. I've been to some meetings and, and listened about the high school. I'm here to voice my support for investing in a new high school. This decision represents more than just building a project, it's an investment in our students' futures, our educators' success, and our communities' growth. I feel like every student deserves an environment that sets them up for success, and the research and the time that you've put into this new high school project is really valuable for our students, not only their academics, but their mental health as well. All of the plans for the project align with the goals that you, you spoke about very clearly, and it seems like this, this pivot, I forget the word that you guys were using, reset, was a surprise? And I, I think we need to reconsider that and keep that new high school in, in mind. I, I think that the return in investment in long term with the money that we've already invested with in the high school planning and the benefits to the school, not only the students, but also the community, is an important piece that we need to, that we need to consider. So, that's all I had to say, but I just wanted to voice my, my concern.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Happ, I'm from Lower Providence. First, want to thank you for all your time and work on this whole high school project. First, I'm, I'm in total support of a new high school, I have been, been at several of these meetings. Just a few months ago, I thought we were hearing about renovations, was a boondoggle, was $90 to $150 billion to put lipstick on a pig, and now we're talking about it as what we have to do. And I, I don't think that's a good solution. I think it's going to cost us more money. If you spend $150 billion now just to fix this place up for 20 years, how is that saving us money than spending $210 million to build a new school? I mean, I know we can only afford what we can afford, but maybe we should think of something else, because I don't think this is going to work. Something that's lower cost now doesn't mean it's going to cost us less in the long run. So, yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say, I'm not going to stand a lot of time here, but basically, I think we need a new high school, and I think this renovation project is a mistake, but I'd like to hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. I thought we were going to have a, a resolution or a decision to put the new high school behind. So, now, we've got some directors working new high school, some directors working renovation. The new high school idea died on its finances and perhaps some of its design. So, the administration is shifting to renovation. How much? Hooray. Now, you must do it right, rather than the purposefully botched renovation efforts of 2023 and 2024. An architect needs to be selected with prior renovation experience, and this evening we heard that some of your contractors have that. But are they the best? Are they what we need? I think it's worth putting some time into that. Does everyone at the table know the difference between architects and engineers? Architects usually get five years of college and work on, on designs, rather than the details that engineers work on to get to the that engineers work on to get to the build to drawings or electronic files. Architects gather the needs of projects, especially ideas on education and efficiency. The second floor corridor, for instance, had great merit then, and it still does, yet I would estimate that administration is still anti, yet perhaps because they are neither architects or engineers, or they have too many other tasks on their plates. Thank you.
Jim Malik, Warchester. The reset was not a surprise to me. Shouldn't be a surprise to any of you guys. $440 million for a school. I thought you can't afford. $15 million debt service payment every year, starting about year four, associated with 4% tax increases for 30 years. Who's going to pay that? What is the cost per pupil per year at Methacton? Anybody know? Roughly $30,000 per year to educate a student. That's on you guys. That's Germantown Academy. That kind of spending, you're going to put us in a bad spot. Ms. Perdue, you had a presentation from PFM six months ago, and in that presentation, they broke down the debt service payments at $15 million. $15 million. You can't afford it. It's impossible. I mean, the goal on the numbers, interest rates are going up, and the Act I index is going down. So even if you could try, you're going to be going to a referendum every year. It's absolutely ridiculous. Ms. Graff, you control what gets done and at what cost. You control the programming, because it sounds to me like programming is the big, you know, what's holding you up. You don't need the school store, lunch and learn, sensory room, fab lab, and a mock apartment. And put it in the extra 25 classrooms you got up there. Put it in there. You don't have to do anything to the footprint, but nobody wants to think about it. It's like, for some reason, you guys have like renovation derangement syndrome. You hear renovation, and everybody up there is just like, I can't do it, I can't do it. Try it. Look it over, compare it, and I think you'll see repairs and renovation would be a good way to go. Because this school, this high school right now, is the best ranked school in the district by Niche and U.S. News and World Report, as it sits right now in this condition. And your new schools are worse. Ms. Olson, you're concerned about renovation lasting 20 years? Where'd you get that number? With, like Paul with the budget? Where'd you get 20 years? Because if you remember the town hall when you were there, they said the lifespan of the new school is 30 years. $440 million for 30 years? You think that's ROI? You think that's a good return on investment? I don't think so. And Ms. Clary, I don't know what happened to you. You were adamant about, oh, no taxes. I'm not going to, I can't do it. And now you're talking like new school again? Something's up, and it's not good.
Okay. Then with that, I will close the public comment section, and we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. So may I have a motion to approve the February 18, 2025 special meeting and work session me? Oh, you have a question? Oh, okay. And work session minutes and February 25 regular board meeting minutes as attached. Ms. Chanda. And then second, Ms. Steel. Can I just check if there's any comments or anything from the board? No. And then with that, since we have Ms. Mersky, and we'll do a voice vote. Okay. So Ms. Austin? Well, no, we don't have to do a roll call. I'm sorry, voice vote. So can I have? So then may I have a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, may I get approval for the meeting minutes? All those in favor? Perfect. It's good. Okay. And then the motion carries eight, eight to one? Eight?
Sorry, the voice vote, and our solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, but the voice vote needs, we can all raise our hands, but Mr. Mersky needs to use his voice.
Yeah, and I saw Mr. Regina, but is his mic working?
Yeah, it is now good, or would you like to take the vote? That would be yes.
Yes, thank you. So that's eight, zero, right? Okay, thank you all. And then we have fiscal items.
There are three fiscal items on the agenda for your approval tonight. Nine A, list of bills. Nine B, treasurer's report. And nine C, budgetary transfers. There have been no changes since last week's meeting. That concludes my report.
And may I have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented? All right, Ms. Austin? Second. All right, Ms. Chanda. And then can I just check if there's any comments or any items for discussion? Okay. Then with that, can I ask for approval? All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So that carries eight, zero. Thank you all. And then we'll move on to personal items.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. We have a few additions to the personnel agenda in 10E under classified. We have the approval of two personal care aides, Miranda Holmes and Fallon Hents. And under 10M supplemental contracts, we have three additions. The approval of supplemental contracts and the amount of $700 for Maria Brittonham. The approval of supplemental contract for Brooke Sheplock. And the approval of extended season pay for the winter coaches. That ends my report. Thank you.
And then with that, can I see if there's any items? Yeah. Can I just get a motion for, to approve all personal items as presented? All right, Ms. Steel? And then a second, Ms. Chanda. All right, and then I will ask if there's any discussion or questions from the board? Okay. And then with that, can I get all in favor for all items under personal items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then with that, we'll go to curriculum and programs.
Dr. Regina.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. We have three items that I want to bring to your attention, 11A, 11B, and 11C. That's new curriculum, revised curriculum, and resource adoption. All of these items are on, documentation is for public review in Farina District Administration Building, and will be voted on in the April agenda, so they are not being voted on this evening. But this is just the recognition that they are, and they have been there since March 19. Starting with 11D, which is a voted on item, that is the Methacton Comprehensive Plan for 25, 2025 to 2028. 11E, the educational service agreements, which read, approve the educational service agreements and terms for student 370303 with special language and terms of the agreement drafted by the district solicitor. Two, approve the educational service agreement in terms for student 220232 with special language in terms of the agreement drafted by the district solicitor. And three, approve the educational services agreement in terms for student 270447 with special language in terms of the agreement drafted by the district solicitor. And that is the completion of the items. Thank you.
All right. And then with that, can I have a motion?
We'll do a motion for items 11D and 11E.
Let me just make sure. So I'm checking everything. Yep, so 11D and 11E. And I saw Ms. Graff. A second, Ms. Chanda. All right. And then with that, I will check if there's any, so I do want to ask, well, I'll check if there's any comments from the board, but I also want to ask about 11, I believe it's 11E, maybe? Let me just make sure. So I'm sorry, it's 11D in reference to the comprehensive plan. I think I asked last week just to check if we received any comments on that. I just want to confirm.
Same as last week, there have been no comments on that report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Ms. Steel?
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity regarding 11D as well, because I will say this everywhere that I can. One of a major part of the Methacton Comprehensive Plan for 25 to 28 is a goal of 95% proficiency in, and on PSSAs, correct me if I'm wrong, PSSAs. And that is a fantastic, fantastic goal for our district moving forward, and I am very excited to see us reach it.
Thank you, Ms. Clary.
Thanks. On 11A, B, and C, same question that Ms. Perdue had. Have we, have we received any public comments since they've been available?
We have received no comments on any of the materials.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And those items will be available through the 15th of April at the Farina?
That is correct.
And are any of those resources available online, or is it only at Farina for review?
They are, but they are at Farina. You'd have to come to Farina to be able to view them.
Okay. Perfect.
Yes, Ms. Austin?
And as in the past, if we need to accommodate families who want to view the resources outside of regular Farina business hours, we will be able to do so.
Yes, we will certainly accommodate families when we need to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you all. And then with that, can I get approval for item 11D and 11E as presented? All in favor? Yes. Eight, zero. All right. And then we will move on to, one second, policy. And then may I have a motion to approve all policies listed under first and, well, so we're just approving policies under second read, right?
That's correct.
Okay, Ms. Chanda and Ms. Austin. I'm going to look on this side next time. All right. And then with that, can I just see if there's any comments from this board about policies? All right. And then with that, can I ask all in favor for all the policies under second read?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries eight, zero. Of that, all right. So, all right. So then may I have a motion to approve all items listed under other as presented?
I'm going to mean under other, if I could, just, I think there's, I think there's some, we want to take some of these separate. So let's take.
Do we do the motion first and then take it separately? Or do it now? Okay.
You can ask which of the items under section 11, or I'm sorry, section 13, which are the ones that any board members want to take separately?
E.
E?
And G. And the last one, H.
So then just want to confirm, we want to take items 13E, 13G, and 13H separately. Any others? Okay.
So I'd recommend first taking, if there's, seeing if there's a motion to approve items 13A, 13B, 13C, 13D, and 13F.
All right. So with that, I will ask for a motion for 13A, 13B, 13C, 13D, and 13F. Ms. Steel? Ms. Clary? All right. And I'll just check if there's any discussion or any questions from the board on those items. All right. And if there's none, I will ask for, to approve the items as listed, 13A, B, C, D, and F. And then we will do, can I have a motion to approve, can I have a motion to approve 13E? Now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Could these, the ones that we're voting on individually, could you read what we're voting on, since I don't have the agenda in front of me?
Yes.
I don't have them listed in front of me.
Okay, so I will propose to do each one separate unless you guys want to do it. So the first one we're going to vote on is 13E, which is the Katie Photography Services, and is to approve the one-year agreement with Katie for the high school photography services as presented. So I will ask for a motion to approve 13E, which is the Katie Photography Service. All right. Give me one second. All right, can I get a motion? Ms. Chanda? And then a second? All right, Ms. Steel? And then can I ask for any questions or topics of discussion? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I would just ask that the board would vote to approve this with a slight change to the contract, which we were not able to get in time for tonight's meeting. The only change I have on the contract would be that Katie has said that they would do, in addition to the two road shows, they would do additional time at the high school with our students for students who can't make the road shows. But the contract doesn't actually say at the high school. So I would just ask that we could just modify the contract to include that those additional times would be at the high school, so our students don't have to drive to the studio. So as long as we can get that change in the contract, I'm, I'm good with proceeding and approving this tonight.
And I agree with your recommendation. That was the intent. It just needs to be worded that way. Is there any board members object to the approval of the item as drafted, but with the additional contract, language added to the contract, as Ms. Graff just indicated? Any objection? So hearing none, you can have that as a, just a friendly amendment to the motion as made and seconded, is item 13E with the additional language being added to that contract.
Okay, so then we will amend 13, well, 13E will be to approve the one-year contract, one-year agreement with Katie for the high school photography services as presented, with a slight change to include additional, additional road shows? Is that the road shows at your time?
It's just for additional photography time. It's not a true road show. And I think, Ms., do you have more questions?
Additional photography time will be at, will be added at the high school. So Ms. Clary, you have a question?
I do, I have two. So I've been, for the couple of weeks that we've been talking about this contract, I've been talking about the, what we're owed, I shouldn't say what we're owed, what we're still eligible for to collect on.
what we're still eligible for to collect under the last contract that just ended on incentives. And I understand that that's seven hundred dollars that we're still eligible to receive back from Katie. Are we, do we have a plan to collect on that?
Do Dr. Uker plans to issue a purchase order within the week on other? It's, it's not advertising stuff. It's.
It's okay. As long as we're going after that.
Yeah, she plans to issue the POs this, this, within a week.
Excellent. Okay. And then under this current contract, it says, and I don't know actually if the old, last year, this current year's contract said this or not, but the language under the terms and conditions says that all incentives, all incentives not requested during the term of the contract expire at the year, at the, expire at the ending year of this contract. So that being said, so we have to collect on the incentives in the school year of twenty-six, or twenty-five, twenty-six. Do we have a process in place to make sure that we're collecting on all of those incentives that are available to us?
Absolutely. I, I, did we, did we not make the modifications in the agreement that we would have all those, all those requests in by March? Didn't we?
Very good point. We did.
Yeah. And I think you brought that to my attention, that.
We did.
And we made those modifications. So by, by the contract actually, actually says, yeah, Doc, I suggested January, but Dr. Uker said in terms of the, of the flow, and she'll be the one responsible, and it'll be March that we'll collect on all of those incentives.
So Dr. Uker. Okay, that really, that got said it. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you for clarifying. I know there's been extensive review of this contract just to make sure we have what is needed. And I appreciate all the board members for your time in reviewing this contract just to bring your perspectives in. I believe so far, partnership with Katie has been, we've had some ups and downs, but I believe they are willing to work with the district as we proceed. So hopefully, we can maintain in good terms with them, and they will honor the contract as this provided. So I appreciate the help. And then with that, I believe I will ask for approval of thirteen E, Katie Photography Services, with modification to, slight modification to the language as proposed by Ms. Graff. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's eight-zero. All right. And now we'll go to thirteen G is the Literacy Plan Professional Learning Vendor. And the motion is to approve the professional services agreement with Keys to Literacy of Raleigh, MA for twenty-five, twenty-six school year at a cost of one hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred as stipulated in the attached agreement. And so can I get a motion?
Ms. Purdue, I was going to ask to amend that motion.
Okay.
Should I do that first?
Yeah, thank you.
I would suggest having the, the motion for the item as drafted, and then a second, and then making your amendment to see if it's something that is a friendly amendment, or if we need to go through the amendment process.
Like a messy amendment. So. Okay, so I will ask for, I will ask for a motion based on the, what we currently have on the agenda, and then we'll proceed from there. So Ms. Graff? And then a second, Ms. Chanda? And then I will ask for discussion or any concerns or topics, Ms. Clary?
So to put it in context, I think the discussion part would be more helpful for my fellow board members. The contract price for year one is a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. I'm rounding up or rounding down. And section five of the contract requires that we cover as a district the travel costs that are due under the contract. So my initial question for Dr. Regina or Dr. Zerby is those travel costs, are they included within the yearly, the next year's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars?
They are.
Okay. So, and I knew that. So from asking it previously. But my concern for the board is that it does, I don't think the contract says that those costs are actually included within the hundred and forty-two. And I would like to amend this motion so that we can sort of clean that up. I'm okay with, I'm personally okay with the contract other than that piece.
And if everyone else is comfortable with that, my suggestion would be to approve the item as listed on the agenda with the amendment with additional language regarding travel costs to be drafted by the district solicitor.
So long as it, it reads that it is accounted for within the accounted-for compass, whatever word you want to use, within the yearly total fee schedule that's in the contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any disagreement with that from anyone on the board? I hope not. Okay. The, the motion can then be amended as drafted with that, the additional language as indicated by Ms. Clary.
Okay, so now we have to do a request for a motion again? Okay, so then?
Nope. You have a motion.
We already have it.
The motion is with the agreement of the full board amended to be approval of the item as listed on the agenda for the literacy plan with the additional language to be added to the contract related to travel costs such that they do not exceed for each year, that those costs are included in the hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred dollar amount.
I'm like.
Lawyers can always add more words.
Okay. All right. So then with that amendment, can I request for approval? So, yeah, I'm sorry. All more discussion?
This is with the current, there's just discussion continuing. All right. So I do have a question. Actually, I have more than one question. So it does say professional service agreement with keys for, to literacy. That's because Schools Cubed was bought for, with, by Keys to Literacy, so it includes both and all of that. It's just reading Keys to Literacy, right?
That is correct.
Great. Awesome. And I just want to make sure, because I have received some questions since the work session, and I just wanted to make sure, students, all students will be benefiting from the work with Keys for Literacy and Schools Cubed, all educators, including special education?
Absolutely. That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you for that. So, and I did just want to make a statement, because I'm very excited about this. So what I want to share and why I'm so excited about this is, first, all those for decades involved in literacy research, including neuroscientists and education researchers, agree that about ninety-five percent of the human population can learn to read. Learning to read has no connection to IQ at all. And that is really, really important. This movement of bringing in the sheer depth of knowledge and the respect in the field that Schools Cubed and Keys for Literacy have will benefit our entire community, and it directly connects with the comprehensive plan we just accepted. It is a step forward, and it is a huge commitment to that ninety-five percent proficiency. So, hold on, I want to make sure I save it. This invests in our school structures, our educators for proficient reading and writing. And it is important to note that the key to supporting all human beings to learning how to proficiently read and write cannot be found in a single program, which is why this is so important. This is professional development and structures. There's no easy button to literacy instruction. It, it lives and breathes with how educators and communities use the programs available to us to help all of our community learn to read and write. And it relies on coordinated teamwork, which is the wonder and beauty of the systems and structures that this program is giving us. Finally, a strong literacy program is the heart of a strong district, and it requires the support of every single level of the district, which is why I'm so very excited to vote on this tonight. Thank you.
And I appreciate your excitement. As a member of the committee, I do want to thank the administration for putting together the literacy plan, but also pairing it down, pairing it up with a group that can really support our teachers and also bring this program to the school district. So thank you. And then with that, I don't know where we left off. No. With that, I will ask for, I think we have the motion. We don't need to get a motion already. We are good with the motion. We are good with the additional changes as proposed. And I will ask for all those in favor of approving thirteen G, the Literacy Plan Professional Learning Vendor?
Yes.
Thank you. And that goes eight-zero also. And then we will go to professional services. So now we are thirteen H Professional Services High School Project, and the motion states to approve CHA and Schrader Group to provide feasibility and planning services to address high school building and campus challenges, issues as outlined in the provided summary scope at a cost not to exceed one, one sixty-one, seven oh eight. And with that, I will ask for a motion. I have Mr. Winters. And then a second, Ms. Graff? Okay. And then I will ask if there's any discussion or questions from the board about this? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of points. There were some comments from the public, and I think that if it's not clear, you know, the Schrader Group is the district's architect. They have gone through a vetting process, and we're selected to be our architect. And CHA is the district's engineer of record, so they went through a vetting process as well. So even if we change projects, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Zerby, that we can use CHA and Schrader to do a variety of projects around the districts because they've already been selected through a selection process to be our engineers and our architects. Is that correct?
That's a fair comment, yes.
And so in this process, what we're approving here is for our engineer to work in conjunction with the architect to do not only an assessment of the architectural design, but then also use the engineer to do the cost estimating side of that, which is the engineer's job. The engineer is sort of part of the project. Is that right?
Agree with that. Correct.
Thank you.
Then can I just check if there's any more questions or concern from the board? Okay. Then with that, is there any request to amend this motion as they read? Because I really love that part. No, anything else? Okay, so then with that, can I ask all in favor of approving the professional services high school project thirteen H?
Yes.
And I vote no.
Well, you should have said that first.
Okay. Yeah. Well, okay. Seven-one. Glenn? With that, have changed your position if I said it first?
No, I just would have felt maybe feel better to hear your voice first.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Next, next time I will do it that way. And I, I will, and I, I mean, and I will just be transparent to say, I understand what we are doing as far as getting the feasibility conducted for this, and that, it goes back to my question. I just feel like there's a lot of unknowns based on having to reset. And without having some of those clarifications to support another spin on the project without having the, all the information clear, I just can't support this. But I understand that there's also a need to, I guess, move forward. But I just feel like we do have a lot of unknowns. There's assumptions in the budget, and I would prefer to have some of that information before committing more funds going forward to this. So that's why I vote no for it. And then with that, I will just.
Ms. Purdue, can I?
I'm sorry.
I know that we voted already. I did want to make one comment related to the high school project and the clarity that we have discussed many times before about what the purpose of the apartment in the educational delivery is not. It sounds, it's being described in a way that probably doesn't give it justice. I know Dr. Ravanese is trying to find a, a, a place in this high school to do this already. In, we do have twenty-seven open classrooms or whatever the number was, but it is for transition services for special education. So to sound like it's superfluous or something that is not really needed for the district is untrue, and I don't want that to continue to be spoken as it's something that we're wasting money on. And it's a superfluous. It is something that we provide our students by busing them outside of the district, costing them time for their ability to have more class time in those transition services. And it's a value-added thing that we want to provide this district, and hopefully, we can even do it as early as next year. But to discount it as just sort of waste is unfair and truly, truly not in the spirit of what we're trying to do at Meth Acton.
Thank you for that well said. With that, I will proceed with dates for board members' calendar. And upcoming board meetings' dates are listed on the agenda and also on the Meth Acton website. And then with that, I will check if there's any old or new business. Seeing none, I will turn it over to courtesy of the, of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that may be before the board. The board asks you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following conclusion of the comments. You can also submit questions via email to information@methacton.org. As mentioned before, please state your name and your municipality for record keeping.
Johnny Andrews, Lower Providence. We have a, for this evening's agenda, a ten-page document. And it was after the, after the earlier opportunity to speak that I tallied up the total costs of all the resources, eight-hundred-and-forty grand. That's far above any cost for books in, in my recollection of twenty-plus years here. And I think that's, it's so many different courses that these books are used in that it would be worthwhile to have an explanation of why we have an enormity of resource, resources being bought. Makes me wonder whether you're going to get another bill for a thousand dollars for bookmarks.
Thank you.
Karen Smith from Lower Providence. Earlier this school year, my son was shoved, bullied, and called racial slurs in Skyview Upper Elementary. A staff member was witness to this and did not intervene. My son requested help and was denied, and was told he was not allowed to use the word racist, all while the slurs continued. The actions of this staff member further the humiliation and abuse that my son experienced. It was a disservice to other students than witness that this was acceptable. And it showed, it proved an inability to do her job over a clear bias. It is not the first student who has called my son racial slurs in that school, nor is it the first staff member who has denied my son's request for help in these instances or bothered to report it. And I am here to ask, why do we have staff that are unaware? ask, why do we have staff that are unaware of how to handle these incidents? Why is it appropriate to allow a student to be supervised by a staff member during an investigation related to that student? How do you consider this to be a safe environment for a student when they have to face the staff member on a daily basis? My son does not have the voice to speak against adults, and I am here instead to remind you all of your duty to provide a safe environment for our students, for all of our students. He may be learning to navigate these challenges among his peers, but it is not fair for anyone to expect him to do so with adults. I have raised, I have given the courtesy of raising this issue, my concerns on numerous instances through this district. And what I seek rather than apology or understanding is action. I urge you to consider implementing policy appropriate to better prevent, address, and protect our students from these incidents. And I thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Reba Mann, Warsester Township, speaking as a parent tonight. I just want to comment, I just want to make a comment on a public comment earlier and say, we do need sensory rooms in this building, and we need sensory rooms in every building, dedicated sensory rooms, not a yoga ball and a box of fidgets in the back of the ES room. That's just not appropriate. It's dangerous, and it's, it's, it's not fair. It's not helping our students learn, who need to have a sensory room to decompress and re-regulate themselves so that they can have a successful learning environment. Also, thank you, Mr. Winters, for your comments about the apartment. And that's all.
Thank you.
Brian Herschel, Lower Providence. First, Ms. Perdue, thank you for your vote on the high school additional spending. You're the only voice of reason on the board these days, currently. And thank goodness that Photography Services contract's been approved. So much time was spent on that, and it could have been spent on the budget. The budget wasn't even discussed in last week's meeting. You're asking for a 4.8% tax increase on top of last year's 4.7% tax increase. I think the budget should be on every agenda for every meeting. Regarding the budget, you still need to put together a forecast to use in evaluating the budget. I'm curious to hear why the district is adding a police chief at a cost of $180,000. Keep in mind, the administrative staff at Methacton has grown 15%, 15%, while enrollment declined 3%, and scores and rankings have also declined over that period. Interest income in the budget is still understated. Simple year-to-date, year-to-date actual plus a forecast will tell you that. What are the borrowing assumptions that are in the budget now? Given the state of flux in the high school project, there should be no borrowing in the budget. It should be taken out. That would be a substantial cost savings and a way to reduce the tax increase. The only thing, putting the borrowing in there, you may want to add the capital reserve fund, but it just increases interest expense in the general fund, and all the interest income will stay in the capital fund. Taxpayers will see no benefit of that when it comes to the tax increase. I saw Special Education update on the agenda tonight. I thought we'd hear, get some information on, information that Ms. Steffi presented back in January, when she showed that special ed support costs have increased 248% over the past four years. In the 2023-2024 school year, $7 million was spent on special education costs, and those costs were over budget by 3.2 million, or 82%. We heard nothing in the presentation tonight about why those costs are high. I'm not saying they're wrong. I'm not saying it's not necessary. But I think we'll get the board to need to understand, for purpose of next year's budget, why those costs are scaling at a 45-degree upward angle. And I see in the budget update tonight, there's a $500,000 reduction in special ed costs. What's the basis for that? It's a nice round number. Paul, did you get that number from the same place we got the 5.1%? It seems like you did. It'd be good to hear why you think you can achieve that kind of reduction in special ed costs, when they've been growing at a pretty high clip. Regarding salaries, in the pre-preliminary budget, 12 positions were removed from the budget. I'll call them ghost positions. They're probably in this year's budget, and you're looking at a $1.5 million payable variance. Why are they, why were they entered to begin with if you don't need them? And has anybody looked at the next year's budget to see how many ghost positions Dr. Zerby's put in there? Asking for a schedule of every employee, their related salary, and reconcile as to what's in the budget, and see what positions are vacant, and get them to justify why they need to be in the budget. And if you can't justify it, take them out.
Thank you very much for your time.
Jim Maguire, Sister. Most of all, if not all, your problems are because of lack of oversight by this board, budget, test scores, new school. So I want to illustrate to you how you're not doing your job. I've heard some talk about the Methacton Education Foundation recently. So I'm going to give you a little meeting summary between Dave Zerby, Tim Bicker, and Greg Pellicano regarding banking relationships. Dave Zerby and Tim Bicker will meet with three local banks to evaluate their competencies in meeting the district's needs should the district switch from the existing banking relationship relative to operating accounts. These banks were chosen, to a certain extent, based on the amount of EITC identified off the 2018 report we received from the state. Once the assessment is complete and potential partners identified, Methacton Education Foundation team members will be brought in for a follow-up meeting and bank personnel as part of a negotiating strategy. So who's calling the shots here financially? The independent 501(c)(3) Methacton Education Foundation? That's how we pick our banks? They approve it? Here's the deal with Univest. The email says, first of all, the best rate I can give you on the 5 million one-year fixed CD rate is 2.4%. However, I can allow you to redeem the CD without penalty. In addition, I will recommend the $7,500 to $10,000 of EITC money to benefit Methacton Foundation. What's that called? Like, somebody's like, I give you this, give you that. There's some, there's a name for it. I can't think of the name of it. Then we have Tompkins Vista. So if I can get you 2 to 3, 2.3% on all accounts with us, will that be enough to get it? I'll raise the rates on the current three accounts to match the new account to make up for the difference in what we're being offered. On top of it, I can try to convince the board to approve the $10,000 sponsorship Dr. Zerby requested to be presented for the Apex Awards. They already have it for approval of the board, but can get it approved. Now, this is supposed to be an independent 501(c)(3), and donations drop because of changes in the banking relationships a year later. So the banking relationship changes, and the donation to the foundation drops. So what is going on here financially? Paul, you're the Finance Committee Chairman. You've got a lot to say about things. Why don't you look into some of this stuff? I've been telling you about the foundation for years. Nothing's happened.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Ryan, Lower Providence. It's been a while since I've been here. Thank you all for your service to the school district. I'm here to talk about bullying. For once, I'm not the sole voice in this district who's speaking of it, and I do not know the woman who spoke before. But thank you to her to have the courage to be up here to speak for her child. As I've said before, my children have not had to deal with bullying in this district before, but I know of others who have. And I've been here, and I've discussed it again and again. I have had conversations and meetings with school district personnel and board directors. And imagine to my dismay what the Safe Schools report for last year in this school district said. Anybody want to take a guess how many cases of bullying occurred in Methacton? Zero. Can anyone look at me in the face and tell me that not a single kid in Methacton got bullied last year? So I won't speak to individual people's stories or names, but I will speak about this. And just ask yourself these questions. Do you know of a student who was bullied because of their race? Do you know of a student who was bullied because of their religion? Do you know of a student who was bullied because of their weight? Do you know of a student who was bullied because of their disability? Because I do, and people I know do. This school does, the staff does. And this is unacceptable. It's a disservice to the kids that it's happening to. You're invalidating their experience in this school district. And at what point is it gonna stop? You can't sweep this under the rug. And I apologize for my anger, or whatever you want to call what I have right now. But I've been here before. I know most of you. I know most of you care. And when it comes down to it, the policy's there. There's a policy on bullying, 249, it's there. But you, school board directors, are not in this district on a daily basis. It is reliant on the administration and the staff to protect these children. And I'll say just finally, remember that it only takes one case of bullying to go wrong, really, really wrong, either for that student, their friends, their family, or the school community. I pray I don't have to come up here again. And as I try to do, I'll end on a good note. It is very nice to hear education being spoken at, at a board meeting. I mean, we do more than finance and facilities here. It was fantastic between Dr. Walsh before and Ms. Steele tonight talking about literacy. Great job.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Smith, Warsester. I just wanted to reiterate my comments from the work session last week to say thank you to Mrs. Dana Hyman, who is retiring at the end of the school year, and just to take the opportunity to, to make a public comment about all of the teachers that are retiring. Like Mr. Ryan said, you know, a lot of the conversation at board meetings is around finance as it, as it needs to be. But the education is the real reason, right, why we have a school district. And these teachers who have put in all, all of this time deserve to be thanked as many times as we can, if we remember. So I just wanted to publicly state again that Mrs. Hyman has been an amazing teacher for my children. And I spent 13 years straight in Warsester Elementary with the span of my kids. And she has always been just a reliable, kind, compassionate, empathetic, and completely professional teacher. So I just wanted to take a minute to say that. And I just wanted to say thank you again for all of the great discussion around literacy and the Ed Committee, in the work sessions, in the, the board meetings. And I'm so excited and happy to see all the things that the district's doing. I'm learning something new every time I attend one of these meetings. So I appreciate all of the effort that all of you are putting into that, from the administration to, to the board, and all those new curriculum materials that are getting us, keeping us up to speed. And, and the new classes at the high school around data and cybersecurity and all of the things that are, that are in place. There's a lot of good things to be looking forward to. And also, I just want to shout out the work at North Monco Tech. I know we have two board members that represent there, but our students there are doing amazing work. And Ms. Perdue's not going to say that publicly because she's too, she's too modest, but her son is, is doing amazing things and was honored last week. So thank you to everyone for all that collective effort that you're putting and investing into our children. It matters, you know, it matters. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then with that, I would just like to check if there's any comments from the board. Okay, Ms. Steele?
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who shared and spoke tonight. And I do want to just, it's not a, a comment or an answer or even about the bullying that has been shared tonight. And it's not sympathy, because it's every kid who's child, every child who experiences bullying, experiences pain. And I want to recognize that. And we will continue to seek an answer and keep working and supporting that. I do want to share that addressing bullying can be multifaceted. And I had actually pulled up more research to share my comment about the literacy that I forgot to read because that happens to me all the time. But, and there is a reason why I sit up here and champion literacy every single chance I get. It is because I see how it is an underlying factor in so many ways, in success, but also in trauma. And it cuts across many different people, but it is absolutely a factor in bullying. So in trying to, it doesn't fix every situation, but in trying to address levers, to create a better school for all, creating an area of, of success for all, is really, really important. And the Iowa, what I am about to share is from the Iowa Reading Research Center. And it is, it specifically discusses dyslexia, which I use that as a specific diagnosis. But I use that loosely here in Pennsylvania because it is actually really difficult to get a dyslexia diagnosis in Pennsylvania. It, it, it can refer to children who struggle to learn to read at the speed of students who do not receive structured literacy, or who might take a little bit more prompting. So when I read the word dyslexia, I just invite you to consider that it's really just students who are struggling and have gaps in their reading, so they struggle. Many students with dyslexia say that they have had a negative experience in school. In one study, 50%, this was out in 2022, 50% of students with dyslexia, I will say, or have trouble with reading, report being bullied or teased. 30% report feeling lazy or stupid. 30% report feeling less intelligent than their peers. 50% reported that they wanted to swap places with someone else. Many researchers suggest that these low rates of self-esteem are related to the negative classroom experiences. When children with dyslexia or reading disability are tasked with completing reading or writing activities without appropriate instructional supports, they have a difficult time with them due to their disability. And children who are struggling to read frequently experience failure. And this can lead them to feel unsuccessful at school. And I will also say I have seen that they are also become more targets for bullying. And it does not fix any of the given situations that have been referred to tonight. But it is a step forward to help create success for more. And I think what we keep doing as a board and keep supporting and discussing is just more ways to create more success and address perhaps situations that need to be addressed. So I did just want to share that. Thank you so much.
I'll just check if there's any other comments. If not, I do want to just highlight a few things just based on what was said. And Ms. Steele, thank you for connecting. I know you've mentioned that statistics in Ed Committee in reference to why you strongly support literacy. So I do appreciate that. I know there, I mean, Dr. Graveney spoke on a lot of the data that's out there. And then as far as this supports we have in place. And so I think there's definitely work. I know board members have sat here at this table, and then we've also have people at that podium challenge us in reference to some of the work that we can do in reference to bullying. And I know we've put in programs, but I think we've also talked about what other opportunities there are, what additional programs we can consider, and really checking to see if what we have is really working for us. Is there something else more? But I think another aspect of it is the reporting also, right? There's incidents happening. We all know there's things that happen, and it's not just getting reported. So I think it's something that I- So I think it's something that I will want to challenge us to look at, why we are not getting those incidents reported and as we should. We do have the QR codes now available for students to be able to scan. We've made sure they also have access to it on their Chromebook. So we can talk about that. I don't know if Dr. Regina, if you want to say something, or if this is something that we bring to ed committee, we can definitely look into this a little bit more. There was a question about the police chief. We will have a presentation on that next week, I'm sorry, next month for the board, and then also for the public on why the district is considering adding that position. I think it'd be a great one to have just to hear about why the district is proposing to proceed this way. So I think that's a good one. There was a question about resources, and I do know we do have a lot of resources on here. There is, we've talked about it at ed committee several times, this new change that's happening to signs, which is the steals. So it requires us to have a lot of resources. There's lab kits, a lot of those resources was brought to the ed committee. I don't know if you want to say demo, but kind of to show all the resources that are coming. So there are significant amount of resources, and it's just so that we can be prepared for that update that is coming. So I think that is that. I'm trying to think what else I captured here, but there were a lot of things that, and if Ms. Cancro was here, she does a fantastic job at saying thank you to all the teachers, and I missed that just because I'm busy trying to get the, run the meeting, and she's worked on this more, so she do, but do say thank you to all the teachers for their time, those that are retiring. I, my son had Mrs. Hyman, so I definitely know she's a gem and a loss to us, and I appreciate all the work that she, and also all the teachers and all the, those that have worked for the district that are now retiring have done for, for it. So I do appreciate it, but I do appreciate everyone else here for sticking it out with us this late in the evening. And now with that, if there's no other comments from the board, I will ask for a motion. I already saw Mr. Winters have a hands up, and if I can get a second. So the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting at 10:28. Thank you all for your time. Have a good evening.